Our name with a roll call to account for all of our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Yes, I'm here.
Good. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hayford.
Aye, and if you are on a stand, an independent mic, you might want to unplug it and plug it back in again. Something's definitely wrong with your microphone.
If it continues like this, then I will go to my office.
That's much better.
That's good.
I'll lean forward. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Sorry, I just got let in. I'm in here.
Ms. Wolfson.
Here.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag.
United States of America. Nation.
What you stand. Always stands.
One nation.
One.
Under God.
We're visible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice. That was really bad. We really messed that up.
Hey, there was a few.
My wife would be mad at us.
Thank you. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the April 12th email, you received draft minutes from the March 7th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those draft minutes? Okay. If there are no corrections, may I enter a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda, we have a presentation by Mr. Chris Weaver from the Research Analyst and Design Division of the Department of Planning on the 2023 Baltimore County Annual Growth Report. This item is scheduled to be voted on immediately following the presentation and any discussion. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hefford and Planning Board members. Give Taylor a second to catch up here. Okay. The land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires that charter counties prepare an annual report on growth. The report summarizes residential and non-residential development in Baltimore County in 2023 and analyzes whether the new development is consistent with the county's growth management policies, master plan 2020 land use goals, and state smart growth principles. The report is due to the Maryland Department of Planning by July 1st, 2024. In 2023, a total of 27 development plans were approved, including 12 major development plans, 10 minor subdivisions, four planned unit developments, and one limited. The total number of residential units approved in those plans was 2,773. Of those, 49.8% are multifamily, and that's 1,382 units. 32% are single-family attached, 886 units. 17.3% are single-family detached, 479 units. And 0.9% are single-family semi-detached, 26 units. 99.4% of those units are proposed inside the Erdle. In 2023, 29 non-residential development plans were approved for commercial, mixed-use, industrial, institutional, and office uses, totaling 4,173 square feet of approved space. 100% of the approved square footage is located inside the Erdle. In comparison, 2022 saw 42 non-residential development plans approved with a total of 6,141,559 square feet of space. This table shows that in 2023, the number of constructed residential units with occupancy permits was 871, which was significantly lower than in 2022 and 2021 with 1,230 and 1,323 new residential units respectively. Among all 871 new residential units that were permitted for occupancy in 2023, 89.3% of the total units were within the Erdle. And here's a map showing a distribution of the residential occupancy permits for 2023. 98.5% of all non-residential permitted construction was situated within the Erdle. Occupancy permits for non-residential construction indicate that industrial development represent the largest used type, accounting for 49% of the total floor area among new buildings in 2023. And here's a map showing the distribution of non-residential occupancy permits for 2023. The most recent development capacity model from 2022 predicts that the number of potential units could range from 10,782 with a moderate scenario to 26,783 units, assuming the full zone buildout. However, most lots do not build out to full density. With an average unit buildout of 1,300 a year, land use inside the Erdle will reach total buildout in seven to 20 years. These figures do not include a redevelopment potential. Since these are the same figures we presented last year, let's point out that we are currently updating our land use layer. Expected completion would be this summer. And new zoning will be in place following the end of CZMP. With these, we will be able to calculate new development capacity numbers for 2024. So we promise to have new numbers for next year for you. In the 2022-2023 school year, the full-time enrollments of four elementary schools, zero middle schools, and five high schools are at or over 115% of their state rate capacities. School impact analysis was performed for each proposed development project with a residential component that falls within districts greater than 115%. The Department of Public Works and Transportation indicated there were no deficiencies in public water status known to exist in 2023. DPWT has continued the metering of 10 remaining sewer relief point locations. Public Works have completed several rehabilitation projects and are now performing post-construction monitoring to determine the effectiveness of these projects. In addition, projects are in design and under construction, which will eventually allow the elimination of the areas of special concern. There are 11 F-level intersections and one E-level intersection that were proposed on the 2023 Basic Service Transportation Map, which would control development. The intersections are listed here. In 2023, 13 road projects were constructed or extended totaling 1.013 miles in length. 88% of total mileage were within the PFA or the Erd. This table shows the names and lengths of the roads. 955 acres of preserved land were added in 2023, yielding 70,895 acres total of preserved land in Baltimore County. In comparison, 1,625 acres and 571 acres were added to the easements in 2022 and 2021 respectively. The largest addition to preserved land in 2023 came via the Rural Legacy Program. Total preserved land accounts for 88.6% of the master plan 2020 goal towards 8,000 preserved acres. And a snap shows the location of all the preserved lands. The dots on the map represent lands that were added in 2023 by program type. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much. Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Weaver? Mr. Pirlo.
Last year, I believe that we were told there were about 4,000 to 5,000 units or lots available in Baltimore County for residential. Now you're telling me there's 10,782, which are undeveloped and vacant. They're split between the two of them. I'd like to know, number one, what vacant is. Number two, reading the planning, the growth report, I'd like to maybe know where these units are, what the name of the projects are. We all sometimes recognize them as Sparrow's Point or wherever it might be, and delineate the districts and also delineate the number of units, the kind of units that are in these residential projects and also the commercial projects. If you look at a lot of square footage, you're probably looking at a lot of it at Trade Point Atlantic, and we know that that's been successful and greatly well-received. But it would be nice to have a more detailed breakdown for us as members to see where this development is taking place and what part of the counties. So the first question would be, you know, why now 10,782? And then if we could get the planning department to send us a schedule of breakdown of the residential and commercial, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, did you want to respond?
Um, sorry, I'm trying to find your. Um.
Our, the development capacity numbers are the same from the past couple of years. The 4,000 is just the vacant, and that's what it was last year as well.
Yeah, I believe Steve answered this the last time we brought this up. That's if we, all the CC we gave out turned into, uh, into housing. It's, they're, they're, they're using redevelopment of, you know, strip centers and all kinds of stuff to come up with that 10,000 to 20,000 number.
Um, no, so the 10,000 to 20,000 is the same number that we gave you last year. We didn't do a new analysis because we haven't done an update in land use, and there's no new zones. It doesn't include the CCC. It's just the, um, current zones. Even though CCC does allow residential, our model doesn't include CCC. So this is just anything that is a DR zone or RIE zone. A vacant parcel is anything that does not have a building at all on it. An underdeveloped parcel is something that has a building, a house or a building on it, but could be potentially subdivided and have another unit on it.
So how, how many of these are like people's houses or lots that they'd have to build on? They'd have to subdivide their lot to do it.
The, many of the undeveloped ones are people's lots that would have to be subdivided. The vacant lots are vacant.
But I feel like the last couple of years, we've continued to try to get a feel for how many residential lot, building lots, or homes are available. I understand you could subdivide, but most people aren't going to give up their house and don't have a big enough lot.
So that would be the vacant number.
I'm sorry?
That would be the vacant number.
I understand that. So you're talking at 4,000. You're talking then about, um, the report said seven to 20 years to build out in the Erdle. You know, seven years to 20 is a long difference in time. I'm just, I think we all know that there's a major shortage of housing, both in the state of Maryland. They just came out in DC with a major shortage of housing, and Baltimore County has the same for our future. You know, maybe it won't be my problem based on my age and my friend Mr. McGinnis's age, but, uh, you know, it's still a concern for me for the county where my children might live. And I just don't feel like the last couple of years, we've really gotten a handle on where our future is going based on the number of the land that's available to be built.
It also doesn't take into account anything that's for redevelopment. So anything that's zoned at a higher level that we could still redevelopment, redevelop is not included in those numbers.
Howard, what I, Howard, you went through a number of items that you'd like to see more detail on. If you could just send us a quick email listing those, that would make it easier for us than to parse through and make sure we get back the information that you've requested.
Okay, I appreciate it. I think the whole board would want to see it. Happy to do that.
And, and secondly, you're asking about lots, but the numbers that are shown on, that were shown that one chart had to do with units. So it had to do with the number of units potentially, not the number of properties. So obviously, if you have, you could build three townhomes on a property, that's three units as opposed to one property. But if you'll, if you'll itemize the specifics that you're looking for, I think it's appropriate for the board to have further data on the future land uses or potential. And so help us, help us, I, help us help you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. That, that's, I, I think that's what we've been trying to get across is that, that it isn't 20,000, you know, townhomes. It's, it's also units. And so the reason the number of building lots are going down and the number of building, pieces of property developed or built is not because there's not demand. It's going down because there's no supply to build it at affordable price, so.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Wolfson had her hand raised second after, um, Mr. Pirlo. So Ms. Wolfson.
Um, honestly, my question's probably not appropriate because what I was wondering, and you can't, couldn't, couldn't do it for 2023. And, you know, it's kind of the elephant in the room for this whole CZMP process too, is how this Housing and Community Development Financial Act is going to, um, impact anything we decide or, um, approve or recommend. So, um, I will concede that point right now.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Wolfson, we'll be able to, we, um, one thing that Jen and Chris and the others in her unit are able to do is they can, they can map out based upon the legislation. So they can take the state legislation and map out where, which properties may be eligible. And knowing, you know, the densities that are allowed in the state law. Again, it'd take much more analysis than they've been doing, but that's something they're capable of doing in, in the near term. Not, not before we finish CZMP probably, because, because their, their plates are pretty full. But that's something we'll take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hayford, you had your hand raised next.
I did. At the risk of being burned alive here, um, has anybody started doing sensitivity analysis in terms of if, if the Erdle were to be moved? I think there's a lot that can be done now that could get us some information that would help inform our thought process if there were different scenarios if the Erdle were moved. And that, you know, in, in terms of talking about data that would help in the future, and clearly has no bearing on today. But if we're talking about things for the future, I think some, some sensitivity analysis of if the Erdle was moved here, this, this would, the number of, um, potential units would be this, or building, buildable lots or something. I think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Halepka. If I, excuse me, well, maybe, maybe Scott's going to respond to this, but, um, you may recall that the Planning Board actually proposed in the master plan an analysis to look at that issue and the continuing appropriateness of the current Erdle. The county council struck that language from the master plan. Uh, and so, well, I guess we could, it, that makes it much more difficult for the planning staff to then do that kind of analytics that the board, the planning board had sought.
Mr. Halepka.
Um, actually, I was going to, uh, bounce off of Ms. Wolfson's comment. In addition to the new state law, of course, the council has been talking about the adequate facilities laws, et cetera. So I'm assuming that next year, you know, if that's passed between now and then, that will also need to be taken into account.
If that's a question, then yes, yes, of course.
Yeah.
Planning Board members, are there any other questions or comments?
My only comment would be, and for us who followed it very closely, we, we may know what they're talking about with the state bill, but it may be helpful for the other members to hear what that state bill is from Mr. Lafferty.
I, what I can do is, um, send an FAQ or summary, uh, to board members rather than try and summarize it now. Todd, you'd probably be.
That's fair enough. It's a big bill, but I, I just think it'd be helpful for people to understand it.
I think you're right. That's your real hand, isn't it, Ms. Wolfson?
Um, my last question, um, what growth are we assuming? Um, as far as population, because the, currently, it appears that our growth is diminishing. So what growth are we trying to accommodate with this plan?
Um, this reports on the growth from last, last year, so it doesn't really look at future growth. But we do have our round 10 projections that we, that we used for, um, that are our current projections that project growth out for the next, um, 30 years.
Thank you.
And, and that's through the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, Jen? That's not our own.
Uh, well, we develop them with, with the, with the Metropolitan Council, um, with the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. Each, um, uh, county does their own projections, and then we present them to the council, and then they, um, get ours, our numbers approved by the Transportation Board.
Uh, Kathy? By understanding a bit of a chicken, the, the projections are also based on how much, you know, how many housing units you have. So they, there may be demand for a lot more, but if the, um, if this, now the housing units aren't there, then it won't show up that way. So that's, there's, you know, what we think we can, can occur, and then how much space there is.
Thanks, Scott.
Oh, we only expect 5,000 people, but that's because maybe that's all the units we have.
Well, currently, people are moving to where land is cheaper and houses are cheaper. And right now, that's York County, Adams County, and, um, northern part of Carroll and Harford County. And you can, if you want some proof of that, get on 83 any morning or in the evening and see where all the traffic is coming from. It's another 20, 25 minute drive to get to another area where it's less crowded, and that's what people are doing.
And also where it's allowed, where they're allowed to build.
Yes.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Not hearing any? Can I entertain a motion?
Moved, uh, that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends adoption of the 2023 Annual Growth Report as prepared by the Department of Planning and dated April 18th, 2024.
I'll second that. Dan, we can't hear you anymore.
Can you hear?
Uh, kind of. You keep going in and out for some reason.
It's not me, it's the computer. Okay.
Nancy, want me to do the roll call?
I, if I think I might have it, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I think what I'll do for the next meeting is go over to my office. So, um, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hayford.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel. Not here. Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ms. Bensley will fill us in on the major actions of the, of the March 14th and April 11th Landmark Preservation Commission meeting. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At their March 14th, 2024 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Coal Rider Spring House located at 1317 Boyce Avenue in Towson. The Heritage Society of Essex and Middle River located at 516 Eastern Boulevard in Essex. The Wagner Property located at 312 Central Avenue in Glendon. And the Greenwood DeFord House located at 6901 North Charles Street in Towson. At their April 11th meeting, the LPC voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Dai Wang Property located at 86 Dunkirk Road in Towson. The Greenwood, Greenwood DeFord House located at 6901 North Charles Street in Towson. The Bard Property located at 305 Malankin Avenue in Lutherville. And the Pizzazz's Property located at 1603 Frankie Avenue in Lutherville, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Ms., can you now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, uh, 4-24 zoning regulations, signs, portable signs, for the purpose of clarifying the definition of portable, portable signs and clarifying that certain portable signs are not permitted in the public right-of-way and generally relating to signs. Bill 5-24 zoning regulations capping residential growth in Greenlee for the purpose of providing a maximum number of residential units available by right in the MD-43 overlay district and generally relating to the MD-43 overlay district. The maximum number of residential living units permitted on the overall tract is under, under this provision is 3,300 units. For the purpose of calculating the number of residential living units, each unit, regardless of type, shall be counted as one residential living unit without regard to bedroom count. Bill 8-24 zoning regulations, multifamily, two-over-two condominium townhome units for the purpose of permitting certain tracts or parcels to be developed with two-over-two condominium townhome dwelling units in the business local BL zone and the density residential zone under certain circumstances and generally relating to uses in the BL and DR zones and multifamily two-over-two condominium townhome units. Bill 10-24 zoning regulations, application of the RC-7 zone to RC-2 zoned property for the purpose of repealing a prohibition on applying the RC-7 zone to property currently zoned RC-2 and generally relating to the RC zones. Bill 11-24 zoning regulations, Neighborhood Commons NC District floodplains for the purpose of permitting the NC overlay district to, to be applied to a property that is in a floodplain and generally relating to the NC district. Bill 13-24 zoning regulations, Swim School and Learning Center for the purpose of permitting a swim school and learning center in the BLR zone under certain circumstances and generally relating to swim school and learning centers. And finally, Resolution 10-24, adopt the Baltimore County Pedestrian and, Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to adopt the Baltimore County Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan for Baltimore County, and that concludes the report.
Much, Ms. Bensley. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for a work session on District Four and District Seven CZMP issues at 5:30. The work session will be on the same WebEx link that we're on at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and.
Dan, you're out.
We lost you, but we assume you say see you later.
April eighteenth work session of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called the Order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and we will now start our meeting with the roll call to account for the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Heinel.
Here.
Mr. Hinton.
Here.
Mr. Halipka.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Here.
Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
I'd like to welcome all the board members and members of the public who are joining this evening for our fourth comprehensive zoning map process of 2024 work session. This evening, our objective is to review and vote on all the issues in District Four and Seven in an orderly manner. We will first vote on all the items that are not sequestered for further discussion for tonight. If an issue was not raised as sequestered, we will assume that the board would like to accept staff's recommendations. As such, we will take a vote to accept the staff's recommendation for all those issues. After that, we will take sequestered issues one at a time in a chronological order. I asked the planning board member who requested the item to be sequestered to share their questions or their perspective on why they did not agree with staff's recommendation. Then staff can give their rationale on the county's position. We will begin with all District Four issues, and then we will move on to District Seven. Board members, our sequestered issue for District Four will include the following issues. Four dash zero one oh, four dash zero one one, four dash zero twelve, four dash zero fourteen, and four dash zero seventeen. Before I begin, are there any additional issues that need to be sequestered in District Four? Not hearing any? May entertain a motion to accept staff's recommendation on all non-sequestered issues in District Four.
That the planning board accepts the recommendations of the planning board staff for the log of issues in District Four with the exception of the sequestered issues listed by Chairwoman Hafford.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
We have a full house tonight, folks. Now, we will go one by one through sequestered issues. We will start with issue four dash zero ten sequestered by Mr. Pirlo. Mr. Pirlo?
Thank you. This is over on Windsor Mill Road and is a towing service, Headville Towing, that's been there for over fifty years. Wait for the map. The adjacent property, I believe, is also zoned BM. And they're looking to have this adjacent property, zone BM as well, to be able to build a storage facility. The property was approved at a special hearing to have cars and various vehicles parked there. And I believe that the current use is proper under the zoning that's been requested. And I think that it's reasonable. They want to build a new storage facility. It's been an auto shop as well, not an auto body shop, but a auto repair shop for all these years, and it appears to be reasonable when you look, you know, at the other commercial that's there along Windsor Mill Road. They are approved by Baltimore County Police and do towing, you know, for the police department as well.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Pirlo?
I'd like to hear what our planner has to say about this request. Gane?
Yeah, sure. Good evening. I am covering for D four. However, we have a new area planner who is in attendance tonight, so I just wanted to state that. So for this one, the the request is to bring the use into conformance. It's been, the use has been there for over fifty years. From aerial photography, we observed that the use was limited to the BM portion of the site until about like two hundred, two thousand eight, when we started seeing encroachment in the DR five five portion of the property. So the the side is surrounding on all three sides by residential zoning. There was a special hearing in two thousand seventeen that was granted to allow business parking in a residential zone. So it was only supposed to be for customer and for employees parking. And as we can see on the aerial, the cars that are parked there vehicles that are abandoned and not operating. So there was also a prior CZMP issue in twenty twelve. The request was to rezone to BM and staff, planning board, and county council all say to retain the DR five five zoning. So just from a zoning and and land use perspective, staff recommended that the BM is a little bit intense for this for this area, just because it's surrounded by residential zone. And then so it's not compatible with the surrounding residential zoning.
And their use be accomplished with a BL?
The use is grandfathered right now. Well, it is under the BM. It's 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 a use that is that is permitted on the DR five five portion because of the special hearing that was granted for business parking again for, you know, customers and also for employees. I don't know. The 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 public, the special hearing was for customers parking and for employees parking.
So in fact, they can accomplish their purpose with a special exception?
The special hearing, they should be. If it's only for, like, what was granted in that special hearing was for parking for employees and parking for customers.
So Howard, since they can already accomplish this, what would be the point in allowing them to have zoning where they could add additional uses like tavern or, you know, more intense uses allowed under the BM?
Well, I believe it's been fifty years as a towing facility for that part of town. That's not what their intent is. They're operating their business there. You could argue, you know, my father owned a body and fender shop on Belvedere Avenue. Did he have customers' cars that could be there for a month? My personal car has been in the shop in Racers Town for thirty days. So a customer's car sometimes does sit at a repair shop for parts and other things. They wanted to possibly build a another shed, another, what they call it, a storage building that would get some of the cars not being, you know, just parked there. They'd be in a building and or, I guess, to work and do whatever mechanical work. I don't believe they're a body and fender shop. They're a repair shop. But I think it's, you know, not unreasonable that they have to worry about, you know, next time somebody wants to stop or or ask for a special exception, that they shouldn't have to deal with that based on the other part of the property is. I'm sorry, the the BM. I think it's a reasonable request. The neighbors have been there, Ripple Road. I know the area. I grew up Liberty Road. And, you know, all of that's been there for well more than fifty years.
Well, I mean, you know, conversely, you know, they may not be in business in twenty-five years, and it'll have a new purpose. And Pine Avenue is a very narrow. I rode the I rode the road. It doesn't even have lines on it. It's so narrow. You know, and all this just backs up to this to this residential. So I I don't understand why they needed it. They have the special exception for it.
No, if you look on the Pine Avenue, there's not much of housing. I count three houses.
Oh, no, 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 no. There's there's many houses on Pine Avenue.
Counting one, two, three behind it. Then three or four empty lots.
Now, did you ride it?
No, I did not. I apologize. I agree.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at the aerial map, and you would see a house there, you would think.
Gane, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So it does say that it is consistent with master plan twenty thirty, though. So so similar to what Kathy's saying. So, okay, so it's so it's BM on that red portion, right? It's just that extra little yellow portion to Pine Avenue that they're asking for?
Yes, that's true.
So the special exception is only for commercial parking, like you said. But to answer your question, Kathy, if they want to expand their service garage, like Howard's saying, they do need BM. It says that BM would give them the service garage, whereas BL wouldn't give them that. So I think I think that's the issue right now, right? Gane, is the special exception is only for parking. They can't actually expand their service garage into that area.
That's my understanding. So even though it's consistent with the master plan, it's not compatible with the surrounding residential use.
Got it. Okay.
The the other thing that I would jump in as the banker on the committee, it affects the ability for them to get a loan to be able to build a building also if it's not compliant.
It's also a problem when you've got split zoning on a piece of.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, if I look to the northwest, I don't know what that building is, but there's an awful lot of trucks that appear to be parked in that BL zone, just three lots to the north. I don't think that, you know, people have lived with it. It's been there for a pretty long time.
And those are school buses, and that's been there a very long time, too.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments?
So, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, go on.
I I do have a question. There is when I'm looking on the Google Maps, there appears to be a house sort of sandwiched in between. But it seems to have be, you know, it seems to have more of a business zone. Am I reading that correctly? So yeah, that little parcel there.
That one's, it says it's homeowner occupied.
I think that's the bus, that's the the school bus depot.
This one?
Oh, no. Okay, yes, that one. That one is homeowner occupied.
Even though it's in BL? Because isn't that in BL, that little piece?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
On the Google map, it shows it as a Montessori school.
Could be, but there could be cars parked there by the teachers or, you know, parents during the day. There's actually two houses on that property, one up on Windsor Mill and one to the rear.
I think this is a separate property right here, this one.
The issuer, you know, say that there's no community opposition at this at this time. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't believe that anyone signed up to spoke on this one, to speak on this one.
Okay.
Yeah, no one, no one signed up, and I just looked, and there were no letters in opposition either.
Well. And board members, any other questions or comments?
May I make a motion, Madam Chairwoman?
No other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I would make a motion on issue number four dash zero one oh that the zoning be established as the requested zoning by the petitioner of BL for point oh seven and for BM for one point oh six, totaling a total acreage of one point one three acres.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Well, you can come back to me, please.
Okay. Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
Oh.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Mr. Array.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Now moving on to four dash zero eleven, and that was raised by Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren?
Thank you.
So I've spent a bunch of time on this today and a number of phone calls around to to kind of figure this out. This was a highly contested issue during the the public hearing, mostly because the community doesn't like that people are parking in the community there. And so that that was part of the the major blowback on this. But as I understand it, they already have these facilities. They have a a rural stand, farm stand that they have on these properties, an ice cream shop and a a number of other things. But with the current zoning, they couldn't have a wedding there. They couldn't have like an anniversary party. Their their sign is not in compliance. So they get a lot of pushback. The the community uses that as a way to to push back on this. So what they've, what they're asking for, and I think kind of makes sense. We don't have, as I've tried to find out today, if there was a such thing as a like a farmer's market kind of zoning, but I I asked too late. It's not to kind of find out if we could do this, but is that they would take the existing commercial properties that they have on the site today, and that's the only area that they want to BL except for one little circle for a sign. And the rest would remain RC two. And I I just support this. We we've, we have a large portion of our county, two thirds of it that is in, you know, some sort of preservation, either through the urdle or through land preservation and that. And people in the community should be able to go out and visit this land, enjoy it, be able to visit it go to fruit stands and buy meat and whatever else that they want to sell that's from the from the thing. And be able to have, you know, you know, utilize the facility for weddings and that. So you know, if there was another zoning that would work, I'd be willing to look at that. I just unfortunately, I just didn't get enough time today, nor was anything brought to my attention that would work other than. uh, was anything brought to my attention that would work other than BL uh for the property.
Uh, i- is this the one that had the farm directly across from um the fam, the, that, that small community directly across the street?
Yes. I believe so, I, that was the, I, I, if I remember correctly during the presentation, there was a, there was a development that was nearer across the street and that was the concern about the parking. As I remember it.
Yeah, it's those houses on the top of the screen there. Um, Shafik, all the ones on the top that um, Jen's got her arrow on, that, those were the ones that came out to speak in opposition. And I, and look, I know Kathy and I live in that area, I love Break Blue Farms, actually, I go there for the ice cream and stuff all the time. Um, but.
I live near there too.
Yeah, it's just, I think it was the noise that was the concern of the neighbors, they actually say they do go there, so I'm not sure either, um, Todd, if the petitioner went and tried to see, so, because they're they're asking for BL, like not CB or anything, right? I mean, because I know they already have retail of ice cream and meat and a food truck on site. So I guess my question to planning and I'm not sure, um, I mean, if they just want to add events there on top of what they have existing, I mean, can they do that with CB instead of going all the way to BL?
I'm not, I'm not too sure for the event um pavilion that they're trying to um, to add here. Yeah, I believe it was, um, they, they, they asked for BL in order to allow for that use. I just don't know if the, applying the CR district with the BL would give it some type of um like less restrictive use, maybe? But staff recommended to, to, to retain the existing, I think that's what I want to say. We, we, we want to retain the existing, it's in a um agriculture priority preservation, um, you know, they will court complaints filed that on the site. And we, it's our understanding that the use can, is grandfathered right now.
Yeah, we, you know, we had, I had thirteen speakers opposed to this. Thirteen. Which is like the neighbors, so it was a huge opposition to this.
Um, who is the council appointee for this area?
I am. I'm just waiting, I'm just listening to what everyone else has to say first.
Now, I also thought that the, uh, the, the owners came up and said that this was more about them trying to be able to sell direct to consumer, some of the, the, the meat and farm goods as well.
They're already doing that.
Correct, yeah, which I thought was uh interesting.
That's, that's what they're already doing.
Yeah, they, they utilize this as a, like a farm stand, but it doesn't give them, as I understand, it doesn't give them like they have, like, they bring the community out for like pumpkin rides and stuff like that, and for some reason that's not allowed with this zoning, as I understand.
Does, does anyone know what the CB allows in planning?
Kathy, aren't there a number of other fruit stands and a garden shop sort of along here on Marriottsville and
Yeah.
this January?
No.
I, I thought there was one that comes right off of, uh, Franklin Boulevard, sort of across, there was a very high-end development, it might be the Marx Manor that were like eight, nine hundred thousand dollar houses and right across the street there was one, but maybe that's not there.
I'm not familiar with that and that's not close to this, this is south of Liberty Road.
Okay.
Ms. Wolfson, if I can?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, I can read off the code, it's really not a good idea for us to try to advise you on zoning at this point. Um, but the CB allows um arts and craft studios, banks with no drive-throughs, barber shops, um, offices, repair rental, small appliances, restaurants, uh, subject to another section, so I don't know what all that entails, some retail, travel agent, video sales and rental, which I guess doesn't exist anymore. Um, nursing homes, it's a variety of things, um, I think there are probably some other criteria as far as how much size and space they can take up.
So CB would be appropriate for this use then because they, um because they purport to um, be, the application for their business um headquarters, which they have businesses in Baltimore, Howard's and Carroll County. Um, they do operate a um adult entertainment venue um on Dogwood Road, close to Baltimore City Line. Um, there's concern in the community that if they get the ML, they'll have the ability to open a tavern there. Um, but the, in the past, they've been doing card shows, Bud and Brew's music um, and Mister Katroko's um, sales um brochure here. Um, he, he points out that they operate a firewood nearby firewood processing facility. Um, the member should know that they operate that without the um DNR's required um forest operators um license that they need for that. Um, that DNR requires them to put their operator's license on their firewood signs, it's nowhere to be posted. And the firewood operation, which is extensive and you can view the five-minute MPT video on YouTube highlighting their use um operates without a special exception in RC two. You need a bar, a special exception for firewood operations, so RC two, so there's a lot of things that they're doing that are deceptive. Um, I would also point out, Todd, I'm sorry, but resource conservation is not preservation. Um, that they, they do have, they are in RC two, they can do all their farm operations in RC two that they desire, all that farming can occur. But this use is far outside the urdle, it's very intensive. And you've got community members on both sides, both in the rural area and in the residential area. Um, um, opposing this issue. And they came out, you, you can't say they didn't show up. A lot of people showed up and fourteen of them testified.
Yeah, and, and most of them, they were in opposition.
And yes, oh, the only one that was in favor was the owner.
Right. So it means that it's a big concern from the community to make the change.
Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, and I agree with you, I think the CB gets them what they have right now, but I think the biggest thing like Todd mentioned was just the events part. So I think that's what they're concerned about is because like you said, they're holding those, you know, and you and I live in the area, they hold those, like, I, I forget what they're called, they're like brew and whatever, and they bring those beer guys in and all that, so I'm wondering if um, you know, if we, if we do, like, you know, agree as a compromise to do the CB, if there's, you know, some way to figure out how they would do the events, I'm not sure if those are through special exceptions or whatever. Um, like Giney said, I don't know if that's for us to decide right now, but I, I agree the CB is more appropriate for what they're doing right now, if they're, you know, being forthcoming about what they want.
I know the community's preference is no change, and they also say that this is a nine-acre parcel, but in fact it's a twenty-eight acre parcel, and I'm not sure why they filed it and didn't reveal the entire area of the parcel. And, and by contrast, Mister Katroko says it's a sixty-five acre parcel, well, that's a combination of two parcels. So, you know, it's just a lot of, seems like a lot of um, we're not being, they aren't being terribly transparent um with the community on either side.
Well, I think they, I think they only wanted BL on three point six acres. That's why it's the front, because I think that's where they operate all their stuff, that's what that yellow outline is, I don't know if they were trying to hide the rest of the parcel, I think that's, they're just requesting that piece.
And there's no adjacent commercial zoning to this parcel whatsoever.
Right, right.
I think these are some of the problems that we face if, when they fail to meet with the planning board staff to sit down and to have discussions before this thing's come for approval. It's butter, it's, it's a major problem.
And this site actually was visited by Daphne Daly when she was, um, so she did physically see the site before she um recommended that this zoning was not appropriate for, for this area, for this parcel.
Um, Kathy, also, the requested map, and I don't know if Jim has the ability to bring it up, but they did just request the BL kind of on the um built version of the lot. Um, and then on the corner, I guess for their sign, it's all the way down the bottom, Jen.
Right.
Yeah, they're not looking to expand, uh, in conversations I had with them, and that's what they said during the the um public hearing when they spoke, that they're just looking to put it on their existing space, so they're in compliance uh with. I just, I think it's some of the stuff they do, I know the beer and thing is probably not the uh, maybe the best, but they, they do do a number of other farm-oriented, bringing people into the community. Um, and um, I think that's a good thing, so, you know, I don't know, I don't, the CB, if that works, I'm, I'm for that, so I, I would support the CB. As long as that allows them to have the sign and be able to do the stuff they want to do. Um, I would support that, uh, that change um, to it, and I try, I I did make an effort to try to find that out before we got on the call today, so I just was unable to get that information. I forth, have a daytime job, so I, I couldn't get, uh, get that in time, so um, so I, I would make a motion to um do CB for three point six acres and RC two for or, or three point six acres and RC two for six point one two acres, that would be my motion.
What me, what, Todd, I hear you, but if we do that, aren't we speculating their needs? Aren't we?
Can we get a second? Uh, Peter, excuse me, can, if there's, see if there's a second and then you can go into discussion, further discussion.
Is there a second?
Um, yes, I'll second that, but just to clarify, Todd, I want to make sure, so CB for three point six and then RC two for six point two one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I second.
Yeah, not nine point eight one total acres.
Got it.
So, so, so my point is, always, Todd, you just said that you don't know what you really want. If we go ahead and make the change, how do we know that the change is going to be their needs?
I've actually talked to them today, so I, I'm, I'm, I know what they want. Um, I hope that CB meets that need. What they want is to be able to operate their business they have today, along with have the ability to have some weddings and, you know, the birthday parties and that at the facility.
But, but one of the biggest concerns, so I, I appreciate the clarity on that. But from what I remember, the biggest concern from the community was the fact that they're having so many events and that people can't, can barely get to their, in and out of their homes and um, just the level of noise that comes from the events on the weekends and during the week. That, that seemed to be like the opposition overall was.
And Shafik, you're, you're absolutely correct about that. I mean, there were a large number of people there and a large number of people who testified. And the, the community is clearly strongly opposed because of exactly what Shafik just said, traffic and they haven't been, they haven't always been good neighbors in terms of noise.
Yes.
Um, I, I have, I have concerns that we're not supporting the, the community out there, they did their due diligence, they showed up.
Would the CB allow for such parties to continue?
And they play loud music.
Katie, you are hard to hear.
Yeah, you're cutting in and out, Katie.
Would the CB, would, would the motion allow for such parties to continue?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a liquor license, it wouldn't be a tavern. And, and part of it, part of the loud noises is that people are drinking at these events and they're getting loud and obnoxious and coming onto the street and to these parked cars in these neighborhoods because of the overflow.
Yep.
And, and, um, you know, it's just not appropriate in a, in a residential neighborhood. You know, they, they, they bought these homes, they're protected, they're insulated by the RC two, and now we're going, asking to put a major business in here, and let's keep in mind too, they're trying to use the friendly farm mo- model. But friendly farms is pretty remote compared to this area here, where we are just a few, you know, a mile and a half by car off of Liberty Road. So, you know, it's the, it's a very intensive use for, for this location. And I strongly, I strongly agree with all of that.
I guess my question is, are they going to stop what they're doing? I'm not sure that anything we do is going to make the parking better in the neighborhood, I think the citizens who live on that street are going to have to start calling the police or do, they're going to have to do something, because I don't think it's going to stop the business from operating regardless of what we do. I'm not, you know.
Yeah, Chris, so if that's the case, so we should be the same as it is, I'll see you too. You are making a good point, nothing we do will make a change, so therefore, we should.
But I think, but I think Mister Ray, what we're saying is like CB would be a compromise because, well, BL, you know, like Ms. Wolfson said, I don't, I mean, it is intense for this area, but I think CB allows them to do what they're doing, which is to sell their meats directly to consumers, sell the ice cream, et cetera. Whether or not those events continue because they're you know, in compliance or not, yeah, we, we can't affect that, like Mister Haber said, but I think CB in this area would be a compromise to allow them to continue to do what they're doing.
I do understand that, but my concern is that the neighbors are in complete opposition. Not a single person supported this out here.
Did the, uh, business operators indicate that they were going to build parking to kind of negate the problem with the neighbors? We had a sick problem with Tiki Lee's when they built a bar down here on the water. And there, people were parking in the neighborhoods and they all worked together and resolved that issue, you know, with the help of the councilman's office. Um, it sounds like this, uh, parking is an issue too.
Well, they never indicated, I didn't hear them talk about expanding parking.
Okay.
It, it would be very difficult for them, we'd have to expand this the space to allow them to have parking, so we'd have to make the facility bigger if we're going to allow them to do that, to go into the RC two. Which I would be okay with supporting.
Well, right now we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other comments or should we move to a vote? Let's move to a vote, Mister Array.
No.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mister Hafer.
No.
Mister Heckman.
No.
Mister Heinel.
Yes.
Mister Hinton.
No.
Mister Halipka.
No.
Mister Johnson.
No.
Mister McGuinness.
No.
Mister Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
No.
Mister Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion does not carry. So we need to entertain another motion.
I'm, I move to accept the planning department's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mister Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mister Hafer.
Yes.
Mister Heckman.
Yes.
Mister Heinel. Mister Heinel. Mister Hinton.
Yes.
Mister Halipka.
Yes.
Mister Johnson.
Yes.
Mister McGuinness.
Yes.
Mister Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mister Warren.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now moving on to issue four dash zero one two, again Mister Warren.
All right. This is a, uh, All right, this is a um a medical um clinic. Um, and I, we spent a lot of time on this also today. And from what I understand, the B L R because of the required setback of a hundred and fifty feet will not allow them to put, to have a medical practice on the property. Um, this is, you know, Rolling Road, Windsor Mills Road, um you know, you know, it's, you know, it's it's a medical practice. So, you know, it's a walk-in clinic, basically. Um, a family practice in a walk-in clinic. Um, I finance a lot of medical practices and I I do not have a relationship with this doctor or or finance this, but, you know, I I think these are, you know, I think we can all agree that, you know, with an aging population and just our population, we need to have uh, medical offices uh, uh, on the property. So, uh, or in the area. So um, you know, I would recommend that the staff recommended B L R. Um, which if it worked, it would be fine. It just, it just doesn't because of the setback. Um, I would, I would be open to a smaller setback on the back of the property um, as a buffer. Um, but the BL, the B L R just doesn't work for them. So um, I think we should look at the BL. They they won't be using the existing building. They're building.
I thought you could go uh request a variance to the setbacks. I did when I had my house built. I had to go through the process of a variance for the setbacks. Couldn't they do the same thing?
Yeah.
Yes, they could. So on this one, um, it's outside of the CRD. We recommended the B L R as a transitional zone between the residential and the commercial. Um, just reading from the zoning regulations, um, you know, it says that medical clinic and medical office with direct vehicular access to a street and adjacent to a BL zone um, is permitted by right in a B L R zone. So it seems like that that dwelling, I mean, the structure was um, constructed not a long time ago. It looks newer compared to what's um around there. And right now with the current footprint, you get more than the one hundred fifty setbacks that is required. Um, from where it is right now to the to the DR zone line. So that's what our rationale was um with staff recommendation.
Um, so what we're seeing here is just more commercial creep. Um, Rolling Road, if you can see, um, is, does not have turn lanes at that intersection. Windsor Mill Road is a two-lane road um at at that point. Um, you know, now we're, we've, we've, we've got this other BM zone net down there. Now we've got a BL zone. I mean, this, this is how Liberty Road got to be, the hodgepodge Liberty Road is, because we keeps plopping down commercial in the middle of the in residential. So I I just think that Randallstown Windsor Mill, does whether these people show up at meetings or not. They're entitled to have protection for their homes. You know, I mean, Todd, would you be happy living next to a medical clinic?
Yes.
Okay, well, um, I can't say that I agree with you, but you know, it's, it's it's just not the creep. It's just not appropriate here.
Isn't? Sorry.
It it's, it's my understanding too that, that as I, again, I did spend a lot of time on this today. That because the hundred and fifty foot setback is is part of that zoning the request, you cannot get a special exception. Can you confirm or deny that, Steph, if that's?
I cannot confirm that.
But as I think Mr. Haver said, you can always seek a variance.
But I believe you cannot seek a variance because the setback is part of the zoning category. That's what I've been told today by no numerous people.
And Todd is.
So what the people seek variances from the standards that set out in the zoning regulations all the time, Todd. If you have a required setback of twenty feet, you can ask for a variance. Um, and that's built into the the zoning regulations for all the zones. So I, no disrespect to whoever you spoke, but that's, you know, height, height variances, setback variances are always part of, you know, in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods, you have requirement in the zoning for setback from property lines. If you want to change that so you can build a deck, you get a variance. So there's the opportunity for that. There's no prohibition on variance requests. Whether or not they're granted is a whole different story.
So is it existing medical clinic now or what is it now? Do we know?
Right now it is a um yeah, there is a, there is a medical office.
Yeah. Jen, can you tell what that?
I'm guessing it recently turned over because it's still saying it's homeowner occupied in our assessment data.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but it's like a medical office, which is obviously different from a clinic. Is that right?
Right.
Walking clinic.
Okay.
This, it's gonna be a medical practice. This is a medical practice. This is a family practitioner. So and that, that's, you know. And and again, I I I did some, I did spend some time on this and uh, you know, I don't mean, uh, this is, I'm a banker, not a, not a zoning person. So but the the attorneys at two different law firms have told me that twenty feet um, uh, you're talking about, I think, Mr. Lafferty, like a twenty foot. But because of the use, they can't, they can't get the variance because it's a, because of the medical use. So and I'm not an expert on this, so I'm not here to, um, you know. I I I wish the B L R worked. I think that would be great. And I would have just, I wouldn't have pulled it and would have went with the staff recommendation. So just you know, uh, I'm being told it will not work for medical.
So so Todd, Todd, is it, uh, my understanding, just kind of correct me if if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that the building currently is only partially being used as a medical office and they want the entire.
Yes.
Building. Is that why they can't get that exception?
Yes, that's how, uh, if if they're in B, they will not meet the hundred and fifty foot setback.
Oh, okay. So there's two parcels in this. This is why I was a little confused. This parcel right here is the the little ones, the the medical practice. This one is homeowner occupied. Gane, is that true? Did you look at the site?
And I believe that one is currently being used as maybe some type of like insurance office also, some type of office use.
I I know Google's, the, on Google Maps, it shows it as something called Access Health when I zoom on it. I don't know how old that is, but.
Yes, so I think that's, so so is it for both of those? Because this one says access family practice, walk-in clinic for this little piece right here. Um, but then also part of the issue is this, this other piece that we we're saying is still homeowner occupied.
Yeah, when I look on Google, on the Google map, um, and I zoom on that, I think it looks like and some sort of clinic.
So I did some quick research. The homeowner that lives in that house, well, on what you have the screen now, the Togan Madupeo is a nurse practitioner who provides um primary care out of the little house next to them. So that the the person who's providing the care provider lives there and then has the office in that second house.
Um, and I just looked up the uh planning department's issue analysis and BL is to the south and to the east. And it also states that um it is, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. So it's, it's certainly not uh unheard of, and it says it's compatible with the area. So I mean, if we always want to go off, I'm not sure why planning said no when those two things are true.
Well, we said, we didn't say no, Katie, what we said, but we need a bigger buffer, that's all, because it's a different use, that's all. And then we focus on transitions from commercial to residential. So that was really the, the, I think, the one of the primary motivations.
But is, is the problem here that because it's wedged between two roads that you'd have to be setback from both roads?
I don't believe so. I I I I think the zoning that I, the if uh zoning section four, seven, four, I believe if I'm reading this right, people sending stuff to me. Um, basically says that if you're a medical clinic or medical office with direct vehicle access to arterial streets, it is uh is part of the uh area, a land zoning B L R that is to BL zoning, you have to have a hundred and fifty feet from any other DR zoning.
How close is it to Cherry Square Mall? Was that mentioned?
This is. It's, it's in the area to be redeveloped, but again, if you look across the street at Woodlawn Motor Coach, you know, you sure don't have a hundred and fifty, we just lost it, but a hundred and fifty foot um setback there. If you look to the south of the building, I don't know that that's commercial um, in that sort of white and tan house right there below four twelve.
That's a church, that's a church that's been there at, at least from last century. Salem.
But again, they don't have the setback is what I'm saying. So it's not that, you know, you're talking about a small practice that this nurse is not gonna have. You know, fifty people parking on the front lot um to have a setback. It seems a little unreasonable. There is some residential around that. I realize that. I look at it. Um, but look at Woodlawn, you know, their building is right up on the road. The uh you know, they've got buses parked up on the road.
Well, maybe that's why Woodlawn doesn't enjoy a lot of popularity um for high-income housing.
Well, I'm not sure that I agree with that. Um, Lenar built a huge project over on Johnny Cook, Johnny Gig Road. They were pretty high-end, Kath.
I would argue that, but that's a matter of opinion. Thanks. Thank you.
Yep, no, you're right.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? If not hearing any, uh, Mr. Warren, this is your issue. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, without any other information that allows the B L R, I'm gonna move to have BL zoning for point seven, seven acres.
All right, Mr. Warren's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're gonna do a roll call. Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray.
No.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
Just to clarify something, please. So what is the normal zoning for the off, for the the medical clinic? Are we talking B L R?
BL in most places, but.
It's also, it's also by right in B L R with conditions and those conditions um include that it is, it has access to street, um vehicular access to a street and but also the setbacks um was the one hundred fifty setbacks. The building to the, to the nearest DR zone.
Thank you. I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel. Is Miss He, Mr. Heinel no longer with us?
It doesn't look like he's on right now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka. Mr. Halipka, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
I have seven yeses to six nos. So motion carries. Next. Issue four dash zero one four, Ms. Brophy.
Thank you. So um, this was definitely one that was spoken about a lot at um the public hearing as well. So this is the former um Boring Fire Department site. And um, the property was vacated about four years ago and the property's been there sitting vacant since. Um, it was actually sold to a neighbor. So it is a local resident that owns it now. That was actually the former president of the Hanover Road Association. So he's clearly has a vested interest in the property in the neighborhood. Um, he actually attempted to lease the site for four years. Um, but he's having difficulty doing um due to the current zoning. Um, so basically he's gonna relocate his family construction business onto the property. Um, and this is why he's requesting ML. I mean, I definitely agree with you, Kathy. When I first looked at it, it looks intense, but it's because he needs to park his construction vehicles and equipment. Um, so even though there was a lot of public opposition, the owner is willing to work with the residents and enter into a covenant with the local neighbors so that he has the appropriate buffers. Anything that's needed to make them comfortable, because like I said, I mean, he was the former president of the association, so he knows them well. Um, and I think honestly, rather than having a former fire department just sitting there empty, the best redevelopment potential we have for this site is really to have a local resident that's actually interested in the success of the property and the area, um, you know, take this over for that redevelopment. Um, so I definitely would like to make the motion um to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from BL CR and RC two to ML um, with the condition that he enters into um covenants with the resident association.
Ms. Brophy's made a motion. If anyone wants to second and then what can have a discussion?
I would second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is one of those issues again that had tremendous opposition from the community. And 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 so we have to also keep in mind that we don't live and as we do this, we have to consider the needs of the community. I mean, they don't just wake up in the morning and come to oppose anything that does not have impact their lives. So we have to keep that in mind. I, I have not even a single person supported this. Everyone that came to speak, they opposed.
That, that, the, there was supporters in the crowd. There were people that supported it. So actually, the, the, the landowner supported it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that is, so that is, that is the petition. But I have sixteen opposed on my note. So we don't live in this area, so we have to also consider the needs of the community as we make changes that will affect their lives.
I don't, Mr. Ray, I don't disagree with you, but my question is, it's an active railroad track. But what, what else would you put here? I mean, will it just stay dilapidated? I I just, I don't see, you certainly, it's not gonna be a champion residential.
Well, Old Hanover Road is bordered on both sides. I mean, on the one side by the railroad track on the northeast side, it's as you can see on the map, is bordered by many, many houses. A lot of people live next to the railroad tracks and, you know, they're, they're.
I personally would not want to live next to railroad tracks, I guess, but.
Now, is this the one with the, I'm just trying to jog my memories. This is the one that was like an old bank or something?
No.
Former fire department. It was the former boring fire department.
Oh, right, right. And it was saying it's one, one road and one road out and you kind of move back there to be secluded and quiet.
Right. And, and I, and I understand the concerns, just like you're saying as well, Peter. And, and that's why I mentioned, you know, when I was kind of starting to talk about it, it's like, there was definitely opposition against it. Mine is more just, it's, it's vacant and dilapidated, right? Like Katie said, well, I don't know if it's dilapidated, but it's been vacant for four years. They've definitely been trying to lease it with the current zoning and haven't been able to do so. So it's basically gonna remain vacant unless somebody does something with it. And I mean, I think the, the best use of it would be to have an existing resident move their business there because they clearly have a vested interest in keeping the neighbor, you know, livable because he lives there. I mean, he was a former president of that association and still attends the meetings now. So I, I would think that he would be one of the few property owners and developers that would really take the residents opinions into consideration.
Well, well, yeah, but I, I mean, I hear you, Ms. Brophy, but if that's the case, why did he not engage the neighbors? Why did they come in masses to oppose this project?
He, he did it. He did, he did engage the community. The community just doesn't want, you know, the one thing that we have to realize is that no is a very easy answer. So if you tell, if you say, I'm gonna put something someplace and the answer is always no. I'm going to build a school is probably the only yes, as long as it's not right next to my house. So, you know, no is, is gonna be the standard answer. This, as I understand it from the conversations, this was a fair rounds in the back. So talk about intense, intense people there. They had, they had, they had public fairs there, as I understand.
No, that's, that's a Katie fire department. This is boring. So, I mean, one thing that distinguishes the shoes here is from any other of the, you know, the B L is this is a contractor that's gonna store heavy equipment, big trucks and all the things that says dust and stuff associated with it. And it's going to enrich absolutely one entity and that is that business at the expense of everybody else's quality of life that's lives around him.
Kathy. Kathy, do you know where the business from?
I'm sorry?
You know, where is he moving the business? You know, where is he currently storing that?
I think he's in Cockeysville. I looked him up. D S M, I believe is in Cockeysville.
Okay, so it's not, it's not currently around that facility.
No, not this time.
Let me ask, let me ask the question if I may for the board and the staff, since we didn't really consider this. Okay, so I, I was trying to figure out how many units you could build here if it were residential.
Great. I was thinking alike. I was just trying to figure out the same thing.
And Joe Wiley is suggesting you can only build a few units, but it's almost ten acres. So the remaining, the area around it is residential in nature. I don't know what zoning classification might fit and be compatible instead of building commercial. As far as I can tell, there's no other commercial in the immediate area. It's all residentially zoned and Hanover Pike obviously is a, a challenging road in and of itself. So.
So.
What is, what is C R?
See what?
It's a, it's a rural commercial district.
That's a rural commercial, okay. And we couldn't put B L C C C here and turn it into residential?
Yeah, it's outside.
The B L C R was rezoned last cycle by the county council. There was a resoning issue. They were requesting M L. Staff didn't support the request and the compromise was B L C R.
And that was in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Uh, Ca- Kathy, do you know what the, or could you remind us of what the residents were asking for? I mean, I understand the environmental concerns, but was there any compromise from the residents or was this just no?
It says they plan to operate an office, store construction materials and equipment, park trucks, operate a vehicle and equipment repair facility. They did not make any suggestions for other uses there. To my knowledge, I mean, it's, I think we all got the big packets and the, the related testimony. Um, you know, would they be happy with a, with a, um, R C five? You know, and, and they could, if they, it's not appropriate for the community, they could sell it and, you know, put five houses there.
Yeah, I think the concern is, and, and, you know, of course, obviously the petitioner had the packet, like you say, Kathy. I mean, they did upzone to help them, you know, with B L C R to try to do a compromise, but literally the owner's been trying to lease it for four years and hasn't been able to. So he's like, well, who better to be there than me because I know the residents, right? So he is like, who better to enter into a covenant and run their business there? I do understand what you're saying, though. Like, what if he goes away and this M L zoning stays, right? But the covenants normally get recorded and run with the land for a certain amount of years. So, so that's why in my motion, I definitely said, you know, he, I mean, obviously we can only recommend, but we would recommend. And then obviously the councilman would see that we recommended that we would approve the recommendation only if he entered into a covenant with the neighbors to, to provide appropriate buffers and screening and different things like that to make them comfortable.
So, so what you are saying is that he has to get involved with the community, right?
Yes, that's correct, which, which like, which like Todd said, Mr. Ray, I mean, he has attempted to. I don't, I don't know what the back and forth is. Obviously, I'm not part of the negotiations, but he, he's been a part of the association in the past and is still an active member. So that's why my motion said that we would recommend it, but he would obviously need to go into a covenant with the association.
And who is going to enforce the covenant?
The association. Association is the right.
That's right.
But the letter from the Hanover Road Association says no covenant agreement could not be reached. So it sounds like they've already tried.
Tried.
They're definitely trying. Yeah, that, well, they continue to try.
Yeah, but you can't, you cannot move, move it on that condition and the premise that it will happen. Can make the change. You could pick up the opposition.
But I guess my concern with all of this is that, you know, we're trying to accommodate those who live in the area. But, I mean, it's been four years and, I mean, I guess, I guess I'm sort of struggling with that. We're trying to make sure that we, we hear the residents and their complaints. But it's been four years and who's to say they're ever going to read anybody moving back there?
You know, that's, Derek, I sort of agree with you because they weren't against it when it was a fire station, okay? That God forbid there's a problem. I lived three hundred yards from Pikeville Volunteer and I gotta tell you, I hear the sirens go off, you know, at two o'clock in the morning. So they weren't against it there. You gotta find something to give the owner of the property some ability to, to use it. I don't say what, I don't know what the right answer is. You don't want a tavern there. I get that. Probably not a restaurant, but you know, there's gotta be some use that the neighbors have to sometimes compromise. You know, I always say the only ones to get rich are the litigating attorneys that bill hourly. But it, it's there, the people moved in there. You know, I guess we could give them more than R C two. You look around the property, it's all this wooded area there. You know, could he build, honestly, you know, Kathy, not five houses there, but based on the size of what I'm looking at, the other houses on both sides of the street. You know, he should be able to get ten or fifteen houses there, maybe.
With D R five, you need, you need, um, two acres per, per lot for D R five.
And what's the acre?
I mean, not D R, D R. Oh my God, I did not say it.
R C.
R C five.
R C five, yeah. Yeah, but it's, but it's nine acres. So, you know, that's five, but maybe, maybe we give them something because again, those lot, those houses around it. So if you compare it to the size, the, over here on the sa, on the west side, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight houses on a piece of land approximately the same size.
Those are, that, they're all, all in R C two and those, those lots have been rezoned since they were built because that, those houses predate on the adoption of the resource comfort con, conservation zone. So that's why they look so intense.
Trying to give the guys something to be able to, you know, sell it and be done with it. And maybe it is housing, but you gotta give them enough to, you know, get his money back.
He can move somewhere where his business is appropriate. Yep.
So how, what you are saying is that, what I hear you say is that it doesn't matter what comes there, it is always going to be in opposition by the neighbors?
Once they get set in their ways, it's hard to get them to agree for something again.
If, if you put, if they would have came forward with housing, they would have went aplectic, just as aplectic as they did on the.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Does everyone remember the motion that's on the floor?
Can you repeat it, please?
Can you repeat it, please?
Sure.
Ms. Brophy?
Um, I wanted to make a motion to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from the current B L C R and R C two to M L with the recommendation from us that he would have to enter into a covenant with the local association to provide the appropriate buffers.
Okay. And then I believe, Mr. Warren, you made a second?
I seconded it, yes.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Was there someone who didn't vote?
I don't think Mr. And Hinton, um.
No, I think he did.
He came back on.
Is Mr. Heinel back on?
Mr. Heinel is not here.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Heinel's not here. That's why I skipped him. That's okay. Seven, four and two, four, six against, seven, four and six against. That's what I have. Okay, we're on the one, two, three, four, the fifth item for this evening. And that's four dash zero, one, seven, Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo.
Mr. Perlo, I'll let you go first and then I'll bet.
This is, um, Rockville Towing, it out in the Rice's Town area on Berryman's for a very long time servicing Rice's Town Liberty Road, Carter, Baltimore County Police and all the issues. This is a piece next to it that they want to move. I believe they leased part of their present property in this. They either are buying or want to buy and wanted it to actually be B M, not what was requested or on the statement here of the M H. There was a very detailed letter from the law firm explaining that. I went through it. It doesn't sound unreasonable. It's right next door. It's not like they're looking to expand it largely in a different area down the street, something like that. It's adjacent to it. And, you know, what they're looking for is to have B M to continue operating their business, which they've operated for, you know, many, many years in the area. I know that, you know, our family had towing from them, you know, back to our shop many years.
Yeah, I, I would just add, I, I've worked in that area probably for twenty years. This is a major cut through from Rice's Town Road to Liberty Road. Uh, and then out onto Red Run Boulevard. There's a couple of different ways you can cut through that area. There's a huge garden center there. There's been an auto body shop in that area for a long time. You know, they've been operating.
There must be about eight body shops along Rice's Town Road right there in Rice's.
Right, well, and around the corner, there used to be a body shop that now is a motorcycle repair shop. Um, there was a client of mine a long time ago. When I was a young man, but, um, you know, I, these guys have been good people in the community. I, I, you know, they, they have a, a nice fence around their, their, their lot. I would, I would also say that, um, you know, it probably makes sense to to request it, you know, they do put up a, a privacy fence around the property. Uh, that would be the only thing that I would, you know, which I'm sure they're gonna want to do anyways, is they don't want people stealing vehicles or getting into the vehicles. So, so, yeah, I, I'm in supportive. As I, as you said, I read the letter and it's, it, they don't want the M H. So, but I, I let Howard make the motion on this, but I'm, I'm in support of this.
I'm happy to do it, but I did want to, I mean, if you look at the map, you've got it, it looks like, I think it's a Baltimore Gas and Electric right away there. It's very well buffered from pretty much everything, including the residential houses to the east. There looks like there's a couple of little houses there along Berryman's, but most of them are buffered by forest and that kind of thing. And they've been a good neighbor and I think that, um, you know, they want to move it, you know, you want to put a motion, I'll be happy to put a motion in there that they screen their property lines from the, the surrounding properties. I'll make that as I make the motion in a second. So my motion would be that for Baltimore County zoning issue number four dash zero, one, seven, that the zoning be B M or the four point four, five acres. That there be a covenant and a requirement that the property, the four point four, five acres have screening and a buffer from the adjacent parcels.
I will, I'll second that.
Hey, discussion? Mr. Ray?
Yeah, this is, Madame, this is one of those that I've been struggling with also with a whole lot of opposition. I, I, I hear you, Todd and Howard. Uh, you are saying, okay, they've been good neighbors, but we also had a great number of people coming out in, you know, to, to oppose this. So, so what is, Howard, and Todd, what is your definition of good neighbor?
I mean, they've been a good business person in that area. You know, most of those people have probably used their services. I, you, you'd have to go drive the area, though. I mean, there's a lawn center on the corner around this corner from that. There's an auto body shop and a motorcycle repair. Next to this towing lot, there's, there's an auto body. This, you know, this is in a, you know, they, I've been by that place, I don't know, maybe a thousand times. It's clean. They have gates in front of it. It's not, you know, it's not a messy. You know, it's not dilapidated cars laying out on the street or anything of that nature. They keep it clean and they keep it gated and that, in my mind, that's a, that's a good neighbor.
The Rice's Town, the Rice's Town Volunteers also wrote a letter in support of it, that they're very important partner to the county fire department, I guess, for accidents and things at that point. So you do want to have towing people throughout the county. It's always been very important, whether it's along six ninety-five or it's along Rice's Town Road. So, you know, I think that they have been a, a good business, uh, corporate citizen of Rice's Town, supporting, you know, events and doing things and you know, taking care of the community. So that's what I think of as a good neighbor.
So they do also support our volunteer fire department?
I didn't hear you.
They do support our volunteer fire department, you said?
The Rice's Town Volunteers wrote a letter, I believe, to the board that we have. I have a copy of it. Rice's Town fully supports Rockdale's rezoning effort. Keeping Rockdale Towing in the area helps our fire service and provides a vital public safety service for the citizens of Baltimore County. Chris Burrows, the president of Rice's Town Volunteers, December twenty eighth, twenty three. There's more to the letter, but that's where he says.
Ms. Panero, you want to comment?
Proposed, if, if you look at the notes, it's like, and what the motion is, is it's, they're not asking for M H anymore. So we knew that they, the community didn't like M H. We don't know if the community disagrees with B M, um, which is the proposed zone. Um, and as you can see from the map. Um, and as you can see from the map, BM is um in the area certainly.
We hear.
So um, so this is the third, the third issue tonight that wants to intensely upzone. RC. Um, yesterday I walked um the area with one of the neighbors in that um. Development just to the east of this location. Um, there are the head just below this location are the headwaters of or head springs of Red Run. Um, the neighbors came out in force opposing this. Um, this property owner purchased this lot. In um October of twenty twenty-three, just six, what, six short months ago. Um, with the current zoning, so. Apparently, they had every intention of having us in the county council. Um, approve this request. At the expense of the neighbors. I do understand that they, you know, Rockdale Towing, you know, as Howard probably knows, started out in Rockdale at Liberty and Milford Mill Roads.
Yep.
Um, you know, I I'm not denying that they have the right to expand their business. But to purposely buy a piece of property that isn't so inappropriate just six short months ago. Um, you know. Hmm, I I'm just not sure that that's appropriate for this site, you know, when you talk about. Um, the existing businesses, they've been there a really long time. Pete Peters, Peters has been there. Um, and Simon's Nursery has been there. It, they only opened their nursery there. Um, I don't know, ten fifteen years ago. And and it and it has failed and had multiple businesses in that location since then. So this isn't just like, uh, you know, Jacksonville. You know, this is, this is in the middle of, you know, an RC zone. So I'm just um reluctant to to grant them. Um, their zoning just because they've been in business a long time and bought a landlocked piece of property.
I believe that the councilman has been on the site and looked at it. Um, you know.
Well, it said appropriate for us as the planning board to upzone it to commercial. Just because they've got a letter that says the councilman wants to do it. Well, when the councilman gets to it, he can do it.
If I may add, um, I think I believe someone asked about community opposition to the BM uh request. And yes, they were community opposition to the BM. Um, I mean, MH was what was initially requested. Um, but it was revised later on. Um, and I believe most of the um. Community members that attended knew that it was for BM and not for MH. Um, in addition, it's inconsistent with the master plan twenty thirty. The site is located in a resource preservation area. It's right now um forested, and we receive also comments from EBS, some, some, some concerns um for redevelopment from EBS.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. If there's no more discussion, then let's take a roll call.
Madame Chair, what is the motion?
Mr. Pirlo, do you want to reiterate your motion?
The motion is for four dash. Oh, one, seven. Um, let me get, I'm not in my order again. I pulled it there. Here it is. Let me. To approve the requested zoning by the petitioner of. Um, BM, right?
Yes.
At BM, I'm sorry, I had to be looking at the old chart. BM on the four point four five acres. Um, with a covenant that the petitioner will buffer or uh screen. The perimeter of the property from any adjacent other property owners. And that's what I said.
Okay, that we have a motion, and I believe Mr. Warren, you seconded it?
I seconded it, yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton? Mr. Hinton?
Yes, sir, yes.
That's okay. Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Board members, that's the conclusion of our sequestered issue for District Four. We will now move on to District Seven. Our sequestered issues for districts, District Seven include the following issues. Seven dash zero zero six, zero zero seven, zero zero eight, nine. Ten, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-four, twenty-eight, and thirty-two. Is there any issues that I haven't mentioned that anyone wishes to sequester? Not hearing any? Can I entertain a motion to accept staff recommendations on all non-sequestered District Seven issues?
Be it moved that the planning board accepts the recommendations of the planning board staff for the log of issues in District Seven? With the exception of the sequestered issues listed by Chairwoman Haver.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Johnson, you oppose? Are you? I'm sorry. Okay.
No. Not on the post.
That's okay. All right, so now we'll go to um issue seven dash zero zero six. And that's Mr. Hafer. Mr. Hafer?
Yep, I will. So this is a triangular piece of land on Back River Neck Road. Uh, right now, uh, the little building to the top there, to the north of it is a is an old seven, is an old style seven eleven. I took a drive down here just to take a look and see what's going on. There is AS. Uh, the proposal, it's currently zoned BL. The proposal is for BLAS. And the staff recommendation was to maintain the BL. And my understanding from uh talking to the planning department is that that's because of the. County's general um decision not to pursue AS, the AS overlay. I think there's a, just a basic question of fairness here. There is, this is a commercial corridor. There is lots of AS all around it. And I don't see any good reason to deny the request. Um, you know, other otherwise it it's just, can I, I view it as arbitrary and capricious. So um, my motion is to uh for seven dash zero zero six. Is to grant the uh the request for that to be zoned as BLAS.
Right?
I'll second.
Have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Chris, can I ask you a question? Do you know where the, presuming it's a gas station or a car wash or something? Where would it front? Is it gonna front Back River Neck Road or?
Uh, as as far as I can tell, there's plenty of access off of Back River Neck Road. I don't. I don't even think it's accessible. From that side road.
That's that's an alleyway.
Better, okay.
I just wanted to try to buffer it a little bit from the housing that's there, that's all.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
What, just uh. A comment, uh, you know, to the staff, so. Would the BL, do they have anything else to add, like staff? The BL, instead of BLAS? Is there any, anything that we should know why it should not be BLAS? It should drop the BL? This is, this is for the planning department.
You know, we just did not support uh the increase in the AS district overall in the county, so. They're looking for BL to BLAS, you know, and as a standard, we set that across, I think, all of our recommendations.
So 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 that being the case, uh. Learning board member, is there, is there a reason why we should go contrary to the wishes of the staff recommendation?
Well, the staff analysis actually says that it's compatible with the area.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Staff rec- staff analysis states that it's um compatible. It's compatible, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area.
That was done because it was done as it's commercial use. It's, you know, as it is now. So it's it's gonna be compatible because it's not really changing commercial to commercial. That's how that analysis was done.
And I think additionally, our, you know, we were concerned about the fact that there is so much AS up and down this corridor. Some of it is. Um, not in very good condition, and addition of uh more AS um might not be helpful.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's an empty field right now, so you wouldn't construct something that was brand new and looked dilapidated.
But the BL would give you, you're gonna get what you get with the BL. The AS gives you gas pumps and a car wash.
Right.
So nothing's happened with the BL, so if they get the AS, we're talking about gas pumps, car wash on the site.
I'm, I'm, I don't know this. I don't know who owns it. I don't know anything about it, but I'm hoping that they'll take that old, old dilapidated seven eleven and turn it into one of those new nice. Uh, gas stations.
But that's not before us, and the, as Mr. Wiley just said, this was not an arbitrary and capricious decision. It's a consistent decision across the board by the department regarding the AS.
Yeah, but that, I mean, the policy to, I I don't want to debate this philosophically, but.
Well, you said it was arbitrary.
Say, we're not going to, we're not going to allow AS and not provide a good justification. To me, that's.
And so. But just.
I'm property owner, you're denying me something that that my neighbor across the street has for no good policy reason. So to me, that's arbitrary and capricious.
Well, if it's everybody's across the street is the determination, then we could allow RO and BL to move into residential communities. And that's not a premise upon which we look at overall zoning decisions. So it's not.
You're not gonna necessarily, you're not gonna necessarily have.
Way we're looking at our issues.
This isn't that big a piece for an AS zoning, one point something acres. You're not, I, could you have a seven eleven? Absolutely. They could be a seven eleven with pumps, not on one acre. Um, you know, they take two, three, four, the site across the street, you can see, is a huge site. So, you know, you're not gonna get that, the big Royal Farm or something else, other than just a store on this site.
And another way around it, Chris, too, that, you know, is to give them the BL CCC. And then that gives them the ability to go to the community. And I mean, I I'm supporting you on the AS, so I'm not backing my support out, but I'm just saying. Another way to do that, they can still get a car wash, they still can get a a Royal Farms and that. They just have to go through another, another. Community, you know, threshold to do that, so. But I I'm, that's not me backing my support out. I'm just saying that that's another way to look at it.
So Todd, you are proposing BS CCC?
We have a motion, don't we?
We have a motion that I seconded. I'm just saying that that's another way. To do it. I was just throwing that out there as an additional option, but I support Chris in the BLAS.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Not hearing any? I'm gonna take a roll call. Mr. Array? Want me to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Uh, Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
No for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Array. The motion does not carry. May I have another motion?
I'll make a motion that we do BL CCC on the property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there's no discussion, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next to seven dash zero zero seven, Mr. Pirlo.
Um, the request was for um. MH, um, but the, as they went through the process, they amended or asked to be amended to ML, which is what they're looking for. It's been used that way for over forty years. But the existing zoning that's there does not allow the uses that are there um by right. I think that again, I like to see things get zoned the way they should be to be operated, so they don't have to worry about. Variances and complying with some, you know, new neighbor that might move in that doesn't like what somebody is doing. Um, they've been a good tenant. The tenant here is a BG&E subcontractor. Um, repairing, you know, a lot of their lines and that kind of thing. Um, you know, it's bound by public roads, does not appear to be any residential around it. So my motion would be that we um approve ML for the five point five eight acres. On parcel seven dash zero zero seven.
I would second that.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Say that again, Howard, because that's not what they're requesting.
No, that's the one what was there. What they asked for, for me to make the motion was to request ML.
For the entire property.
For seven dash zero zero seven. Just so you all know, we're gonna come, the next two properties are all owned by the same person. So they're trying to.
Uh, Mark, these letters came in late last week, and I immediately got hold of the councilman's office and asked them to work directly with the attorney. Because it came so late to us, so that we wouldn't be. Going through all these maneuvers that we are. So the councilman's office reached out directly to the attorney, and they're gonna work with them on this, on this, you know, eleventh hour change.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
So on this particular seven dash zero zero seven, they would like us to approve ML. Um, at that point, so that the use complies with what they're using it for now.
So the public does not get a chance to comment on this, is that correct?
Well, they would have had the comment at the hearing to comment on it.
And they give the comment to the council.
Yep.
But I did look up my notes, Kathy. There was nobody that spoke for or against seven dash oh seven in District Seven. So I don't, I don't see any way that went for it or against it.
Well, I mean, previously, they wanted point zero five acres in ML. Now they want the whole five point five eight.
Well, they, they, they wanted MH, which is even higher, right, at five? At five point five, three acres.
If no one opposed MH, I, I can't imagine they'd oppose ML. And it is, I believe, consistent with the master plan and also compatible again. I know I sound like a broken record, but I think that is important.
Well, and if you look at the whole contiguous block, you know, I think we know it's all industrial, we're not looking in. There is DR across the street, I just, I agree with that. I mean, I don't know what's there, you can pull back up the, uh, the aerial, we can see if there's housing there, I don't know, it doesn't look like it.
It's Eastern School, Eastern Tech School.
Okay.
Yeah, I rode, I rode back there a couple of weeks ago, it's, it's, nobody's going to be opposed to this. It's in, it's in a no man's land, uh, between railroad tracks and, um, swampland and things like that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, seven dash zero zero eight, Mr. Perlo.
Once again, they would like to amend what they originally asked for, um, which was, eight is, I'm sorry, DR five point five and MH. They would like to, um, request that the entire one point seven six acres be ML as well. So I would make a motion that seven dash zero zero eight, that we amend the, or accept the requested zoning of ML for the one point seven six acres for seven zero zero eight.
I second it.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
Um, Chris, in this area, it's, it's slightly different than the one we were just looking at, because obviously it was ML everywhere. This one seems to have more residential, more DR five point five. Are you familiar with this area, is this also no man's land?
No, no, this is, I think, well, this is, I think, a, a good buffer area, um, so I'm not gonna, I don't know what the councilman's going to work out with them, but I, I'm not in support of this.
This is a lot closer to houses than the last one we were looking at.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We did have two people speak against this issue with the public hearing.
So that I'm clear, there, we're, we're, we're not voting on something that the residents in the area didn't know about. Or are they, or are they, did they change this, request something and change it now?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they're going for, they're going from MH to ML, the, the five point five is, uh, you know, was probably as a buffer, so, you know, you know, if this doesn't pass, maybe we can do ML and do the buffer of the five point five, but.
I really think that instead of us trying to debate this like we did the other day with all these, uh, these positions, all this buffer stuff, that's why I wanted to get the councilman's office involved, because this came to us so late. I, I just think it's not fair to us to, to make us have to deal with this at the eleventh hour.
So Chris, what are your proposal?
Oh, I can't, I mean, this is Howard, Howard's sequestered, so it's really not mine to, to, to propose.
Well, we do have a motion and we have a second, so we could take a roll call and if it doesn't pass, then we can, then you can come up with something else. Unless there's other discussion you'd like to have.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make the point that it's all well and good. I mean, the planning board is put in a precarious position when we get emails or messages the day before vote after months of consideration that suggests that there's now needs, oh, we want to consider a different zoning classification. I really think it's unfair to the planning board to get these late, uh, requests. And I respect planning board members advancing them, uh, and at the same time, it suggests that we are only left with them leaving it to the council. Although we know the council has the ultimate decision, the planning board is unfortunately not given the opportunity to give serious deliberation to these issues. And to me, it's disappointing, uh, and this is not the only issue. We've seen a number of emails come in the past couple of days, uh, that really, if we had had them, or we could have had them before the filings, we have one email today about an issue coming a little bit later, where a decision was made back in twenty twenty-three, and if the board had had that as a justification, or the planning committee had had, the planning staff had had, may have been different. So I'm disappointed that the board has put in the positions they are tonight to have to now navigate these late minute requests. It's, you'll make your decisions that you need to, but it's very frustrating for staff, and I'm sure for many planning board members, to have to grapple with these at the very last moment. Just, sorry, you had to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. That being said, we'll move on to the roll call. Mr. Array, can, can you repeat the motion now?
Oh, definitely.
The motion is that seven dash zero zero eight shall be amended to MLIM for the five, sorry, the one point seven six acres.
And that was seconded by Mr. Warren? Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Uh, no.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No. No.
Mr. Mc, Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion does not carry. May I entertain another motion?
You go ahead.
I make a motion that on, I guess this is seven dash zero zero eight, that we accept staff recommendation.
Second. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
No.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, to the seven dash zero zero nine, Mr. Perlo.
Again, this is owned by the same family, so to speak, it's owned by a trust, actually. And it's a little bit, um, I have the right piece up, sorry. Oh, so it's an arrow piece there, you see an office on it, but next to a BL piece. Um, I believe that it's actually an office in that house, but, um, they had requested that, um, they have BL, um, on it, and the recommendation came back with a little bit of BL, but mostly DR five point five. Um, I think that they would be acceptable to, um, an R O or CB, um, so I'd make a motion that we, um, accept a zoning of, sorry, RO one seven dash zero zero nine.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes, I think it's like the previous, uh, issue, item zero zero eight, uh, these things keep coming late. Now, my, does it just go to one person, to Todd and to Howard? How do you get this from this, you know, for these changes? Last minute changes?
Well, the, the attorney had contacted the planning board and the planning department, I'm sorry, and discussed it with them. And they asked us to sequester it and consider a different zoning on it. So this is what I'm presenting on their behalf, based on the properties being owned by the same person who was trying to get her properties all zoned the same, in the same general area. They're all adjacent to each other, and I thought that was a reasonable request.
Yeah, like the director just said, I think it puts us in a terrible situation, these last minute changes. Uh, they do the work, uh, they are very busy and then you bring, not you, and then we receive last minute changes and revisions, which actually, when I look at, you know, my list here, we've been doing that lately, so I, I, I think it's a bad practice, so how can we do, what can we do to prevent this in the future?
Mr. Array, we, we can put any zoning in as the planning board that we want. So we can change any zoning on any property to anything we want, we do that all the time. And I never heard from the, from anybody on this property, so I didn't receive an email or anything on this. I just, it, it makes sense to comply, if you got an office on there, it's, you know, these guys have been there forever, and I, I don't disagree with Chris that, you know, the, that the county council can, can make the decision and do that. I'm, I'm not opposed to that, but I made, I seconded the motion because I don't, I just, I agree with it. So that's why you make that motion, and we can do it on any, I can say, I want this to be, I can make a motion to make it, you know, ML, and it'll get shot down, but I can make the mo, anybody can make a motion on, on here for any zoning that they think is the right zoning. So to say we can't do that, Mr. Array, is just not appropriate.
No, I did not say that we can do it, I'm saying that looking at my, is, you know, the original request is BL. And then today, any other day, we keep, you know, changing the zoning request. So that is why I agree with, uh, with, uh, with, uh, Chris and, uh, Steve, that, uh, it becomes, you know, very nerve wracking to keep doing this. I know you can make a change, I understand.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the zoning that was just proposed?
May I, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Perlo, when you look at the, the depth of this property, is it more appropriate to split it? I mean, if you, if, if RO is going to be on the front part, or even on the front two pieces, but then you move strictly into residential, um, is it more appropriate to split zone it than to have the back pieces be purely residential?
Well, the only problem with it, I might agree with you that since it abuts the residential, but I think you probably have two landlocked pieces, um, back there along Misty Meadows Court, you know.
Well, I'm looking, no, I'm looking off of John. It looks like the, the two, uh, the piece that just below seven zero zero nine are along John, where you could.
Absolutely, I'd, you should be a title guy, Mr. Lafferty. You should be, you should be a title guy, that's all I'm worried about is access, so.
But you have access here on these two parcels from John, I guess is what I'm saying, even though it's on the same ownership, that the front two pieces are, uh, back two pieces are sort of separated by the, uh, end of John Avenue.
I would amend my motion to that, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, um, you've got better eyes than I do, I don't wear glasses.
I'll accept that.
I would accept that that's a reasonable compromise for it.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what's, uh, if, if the board is so inclined, if that's a way to, uh, address the differential.
I'll accept that amendment.
But wait.
Yes.
Um, so when I just looked on S-Stat and I also, my Google search, and this shows up as a house, as a rented house, not as an office.
I believe it's an office. I mean, I mean, this is in my notes.
Under your toll, but you know, S-Stat has it listed as a rental property. When I do a Google search, it looks like a, a house, I mean, you know, there's like stuff in the backyard.
I believe, it does not look like. I believe they want the opportunity to turn it into an office.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was some concern about access, I guess, coming into the office, Office Stemmers Run, so that's why they wanted the, whatever I said, O, RO.
It looks like there's a joint, um, alleyway with the house next to it.
Well, that's, I think, what we were talking about, putting and leaving as residential, the back pieces.
Okay, Mr. Perlo, you want to amend your motion, would you want to state it clearly so the board?
Yep, give me one second just to check my notes here, if I might. So I would make a motion that seven dash zero zero nine, that parcel, from Stemmers Run Road to the rear property line of the BL, is there any way I can describe it? The RO, and the, the two far parcels below the rear property line of the BL parcel, those two parcels, be, um, I guess, um.
DR five five, right?
Yeah, five five, you're not going to put five five there, but you know.
Well, that's what, that's what the zoning is, that's why I just.
That's what the current zoning is, so those two parcels could be five point five.
And I, and I amend my second to that.
Okay, so do, if there's no further discussion, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy? Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Halipka? Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Next, on to seven dash zero one O, Mr. Hafer.
So this concerns a, what had previous, prior to twenty twenty-one, uh, was a owner occupied single family home in a community of single family homes, uh, behind Drug City Pharmacy. Uh, Drug City bought the home in, um, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, it's, I believe the current zoning is DR five five, and Drug City wants to upzone it to, uh, what they have on their, the rest of their property, which is, uh, BL CCC. I, I, you know, that, it, it really doesn't, it's not in keeping with the surrounding community. Um, it's an older community of single family homes, well-maintained homes, uh, predominantly older people. I, uh, I share Kathy's concern about, you know, there, whether or not people really got the notice of what was going on, whether they were well informed about what is being proposed. Um, there's no, to my knowledge and to the councilman's office knowledge, there's no plan for what Drug City wants to do with this particular piece of property other than to upzone it. Um, there was no, my understanding is that there was no one speaking in favor or opposed to it. In data science, we would say, absence of evidence. In data science, we would say, absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. Just because nobody was opposed or nobody supported, doesn't mean they don't oppose or don't support. It just means nobody came out. And so I, I just cannot, it just does not feel right to me, that absent a plan, absent any real community support. You know, you would have thought, if I was the business owner, I would have gone knocking on the doors of the people of the, the single family homes around me and asked them to write letters of support. And they didn't, I mean, that's a relatively easy thing to do, and they didn't do that. And so I just feel really uncomfortable upzoning that without more information. Oh, I'm sorry. So my motion is that for seven dash zero one zero, we maintain the existing zoning of D R five point five.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, the, the staff, the staff supported this, B L C C C. So I, I'd ask what their thoughts, why they, why they did that.
Well, it's consistent with the master plan and the surrounding area.
Well, let, let the staff answer.
Well, I'm just reading the.
Right, right, right.
Uh, part of the reason we supported this was, you know, it backed up to the parking lot to the rear. There was the other B L business next to that parking lot, just directly south, I guess, southeast of that. So we figured this one might be okay.
Okay.
Basically, you're, you're saying because the parking lot behind the B L C C, there's about ten cars there. If they were to tear it down, if that's the case. Mr. Hafer, you know the area better than me. I was under the impression that this is almost a community hangout kind of place. Do they do some kind of events and different things that seem to do, be nice for the neighborhood and for the community?
Yeah, that, the events are held across the street. I guess it would be kind of off the corner of Drug City, the parking lot at North Point. It says North Point Terrace and North Point Road. They, Drug City owns that parking lot as well, I believe. Right there, they, so they hold their events right, right on this parking lot in this area here. They also own the parking lot across the street from there. And then the Drug City building itself is there. I'm not, I, I think Drug City's been a, a good neighbor. It recently changed hands. They're doing a lot more in terms of, of liquor tastings, wine tastings, food trucks, things like that. I just, as I said, I, I just, I feel vertically uncomfortable because something as simple as getting letters of support from the people who are going to be most impacted by something happening on that piece of property, it just doesn't, it just doesn't feel right to me. It just seems a little sketchy.
Well, I would tell you, I was, I was called by the present owner, I don't have his name here, but he just called me a day or so ago and said, I'd like to tell you about it. He said, I walked the neighborhood, he tells me, I accepted at face value that he had no opposition. He seems to be, from, you know, other people that I did reach out to, including the councilman, a very good business community person in the neighborhood, well respected. I know he's new, but you know, seems to be continuing the path that the prior person had.
Yeah, wasn't the guy that owned this on the planning board?
Yes.
Was it Henry was at one point that owned it? I don't think he does now.
George.
George Fodos?
Yes, that's right.
So, I mean, I don't think.
I, I agree with you, Chris. It's just like the, the gas station thing that I supported you on, that, that, you know, this is a successful business that's very well respected. I've actually been to one of the bourbon tastings at that facility. I know a number of us have, have been over there. There's a parking lot adjacent to this. I mean, I, I'm, I just don't see, I don't see that it's incongruent with the surrounding area, so.
Yes, unless, unless you or your family lived across the street. So, I mean, you know, I really feel like these underrepresented and underserved communities where I've lived for fifty seven years, need some decent vocal representation, and so I've provided it.
Right.
Because I think you're making assumptions, because we don't know if, we don't know what the, I mean, because there are no letters of, of, or again, so.
So the question is, which way do we go, right? In the absence of information, we have to input our own views, so there you go.
So we know it's consistent with the master plan and it's consistent with the area. We do.
Yes, C C.
Chris, would you be comfortable with us giving it approval as the B L C C? If the owner, I don't, I don't know that I want to call it a covenant, but that the owner gets the community association to have some kind of meeting and I'm either supporting it or not supporting.
No, I'm, I'm fine with an upper down vote, Howard, because I don't want to put any additional onus on the, on the owner. I'll let the councilman's office deal with that.
All right.
But I guess my, my concern is that they call us, but they don't come to the meeting. He had opportunity to come to the meeting to present what he, what he presented to you, but he didn't come. And I, I mean, I just, and he's calling different ones. I mean, I, we don't, we haven't had a chance to even kind of discuss it and look at it. It's just kind of thrown on us now that he's called you. And he's, you know, giving you, I'm not saying that he's lying, but I'm just, it's just not right to me. It doesn't seem right.
Mr. Johnson, there's hundreds of issues where no one came to the meetings. I don't think that, that usually the only time people come to the meetings is when they're opposed and, or, or, or they know that there's been an issue. I mean, there were hundreds and hundreds zoning issues brought up. Many, most, I'd say, did not have anybody come and speak for or against.
We'd have, we'd have, we'd have to call every, we'd have to call every issue and, and do that.
But it's not, not even calling the issue. It's like, we're getting information that, you know, he's talked to one of us and he's given us information. I mean, given one of us information that the others are not privy to until now.
And Derek, I think that's a really good point.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so
we're not going to be, ladies and gentlemen, we're not going to be able to stop that. That's probably every four years you're seeing the same thing. People weigh in at the last moment, there's requested changes. And although you may feel frustrated by the lack of information prior to your decisions tonight, you're faced with a decision tonight whether to support Mr. Hafer's motion or not.
The request was for B L C C C, and staff recommendation is B L C C C.
And, but he has suggested, he, his motion is to keep the existing zoning, as opposed to the staff recommendation.
But staff recommendation is consistent with the master plan.
Right. It's Mr. Ray, yeah, he made, he made a different motion, and was Mr. Hafer, was that seconded?
Yeah, I seconded it, Nancy.
I thought so. Thank you, Ms. German. So we have a motion and a second. Does everybody remember what the motion is?
To keep it D R five five?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If there's no further discretion, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Halepka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
No.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm back on, this is Steve Heine.
Okay. Have you been listening to the discussion?
I have been.
And how would you vote?
I vote no.
Okay, then the motion does not carry.
I make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Next, on to seven dash zero one one, Ms. Brophy.
Okay, thank you. I know it's a long night, so I'm gonna try to be brief. So this property, thank you so much for planning staff for spending a little bit of time with me on this. So this property is actually zoned in an Essex C R D. It currently has B L A S in the front. Ms. Meacham, if you could zoom out just a smidge. So you can see the front half of it that has that house on, I guess, your top diagonal left part. That is already B L A S. The requister was asking for the back portion in the yellow outline to be L A S. It's close to a lot of water and a lot of houses, which I had a lot of concern with. So I worked with planning staff yesterday. Ultimately, they do want to put either a fuel service station or something here, which is why they're asking for an A S. But they won't be able to on the point eight acres in the front. So along Eastern Avenue or Eastern Boulevard on the front. So they want an additional point seven acres in the back to combine to one and a half acres total. So Jen was great, helped me mark that out. And basically, point seven acres in the back would allow a thirty four foot buffer from the water, and then a twenty to thirty foot buffer along the residential, just depending on the angle. There's definitely other nuances to the property that the petitioner will have to deal with on their own, not something that we need to deal with, but considering they were working with us to try to go ahead and work and get some of those buffers in. I wanted to make a motion to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from D R five point five to B L A S, but only for point seven acres. And if you don't mind, Jen, could you draw that little rectangle, I mean, approximate, just so the board can kind of see?
While she's doing that, would the, would, would they access the site from eastern or from Hawthorne?
Yeah, that's kind of what Steve and I talked about. That's, that's on them. They would have to figure out an Eastern Boulevard cut in and cut out, since it's a one way on Hawthorne. That would be something that they would have to work on with the vehicle circulation, and when they start going through feasibilities. There's also like a modified buffer area in that space because of the water. So there's, there's a few things. This was more just, you know, me working with them and with planning to try to at least get some kind of buffer around there and allow them to use it for what they need.
Jen, could you turn on the Chesapeake Bay critical area? This, there are some environmental concerns that are noted in the agency comments. This is an L D A in the critical area. But there also is a pretty, I think it's a hundred foot buffer from the water that they would have to deal with.
Yeah, it was like a modified buffer area after we were talking about Joe, so I think it's a little less than a hundred feet. But like I said, I don't, I don't know the details. Me, this was more just me working with you guys to try to get them as much of a buffer there. I mean, it's thirty four feet right now with a point seven acres, you know. I, I mean, they can worry about dealing with that.
Yeah, I also have opposition for this, and you know, what they, what they said at the hearing was that they wanted to, to remain residential, not motion. That is, you see, it's waterfront property. They want to keep it as it is. That was the opposition. I took obvious notes on that.
Isn't this in a commercial revitalization area somewhere?
Yeah, I, I don't think this was that issue, Mr. Array. Seven zero eleven?
Eleven, yes.
Yeah, I have, I have notes on that too. The Hawthorne Community Association strongly opposed it.
Yes, I'm looking at my.
Oh, yes, yes, the community association. Sorry, yes, that's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, this.
So the C R D stopped, it's in this light beige, so it doesn't include this parcel. And the critical area mapping that Jen showed a moment ago shows that half of this requested point seven acres really would not be buildable. It does not have access from Eastern Boulevard. Hawthorne is a one way street eastbound. And in our conversations yesterday with Ms. Brophy, I think we really suggested that the redevelopment of this site as a B L A S is not appropriate nor logical.
We did also figure out that the L D A designation that this has in the critical area only allows a fifteen percent impervious surface coverage, so that's, that's everything.
So even for one and a half acres or two and a half acres, one half acres would be point two two five of the entire site. So all due respect, even if we granted them the zoning, it would be, I believe, misleading that they could actually do anything with the property.
Yep. Yeah, I was going to say, it just doesn't pass the smell test, right? Putting, putting a gas station on the waterfront.
Yes, right, so, so they were opposed to it, yeah.
And what looks like a nice sized house on the water with, I think, an old swimming pool, if I'm looking at the pictures.
Well, it was vacant right now. Yeah, both, both of the sites are vacant right now. Both the one along Eastern Boulevard and the one under the rectangle, they're both vacant right now.
Yeah, so they wanted to, to remain residential.
Okay, so any other discussion? If not having any, Ms. Brophy, do you want to entertain a motion?
Oh, yes, sorry. My motion is to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from D R five point five to B L A S, but only for the point seven acres as drawn.
Mr. Array?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. May I hear a second?
I'll second it.
It might be, it, it might be just a little bit more than point seven acres, because we'll take this, the B L A S to the center line.
Center line?
Yes.
Line of the road.
All right, so the point seven acres would be just the part on the, the, the property, but then there'd be a little extra on the center line.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
I really like you.
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yeah.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion does not carry. Can I hear another motion on seven dash zero one one?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Do I have a second? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Um, yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, seven dash zero one four, Mr. Hafer.
Just a little context before we jump into the issue at hand. I, just as a general philosophy, I'm very strong advocate of private property rights. And as opposed to like a commercial or business property. This particular parcel of land is owned by a private citizen, Mr. Gibson, who did attend the hearing and did testify. And he indicated that he owns the land and he wants to request RC five zoning to enable him to build two houses for his family on the land. I talked to the planning department. I understand their rationale for for not wanting to grant the request. However, I believe, and we've talked about this a few times tonight, that environmental, whether or not someone is going to be permitted to build on their property is not within the planning board's purview. Our decision is on land use issues. And so, you know, not the environment, we're not to assess environmental impacts and things like that in our decision making. So I want to make a motion to support Mr. Gibson's request to be able to build houses for his family on this land. So for seven dash zero one four, I'd like to to motion that we accept the request for RC five.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Is it, I don't even want to hear from the staff, the planning department staff. Is there a reason why we should keep it the same, RC twenty?
Part of this is the critical area that this is in a RCA, which is the resource conservation area. So I know environmental had a lot of, sorry, I had it up. Don't have this one up, sorry. I know environmental had concerns with this. Their exact wording is substantial environmental concerns, not consistent with department goals. Proposed zoning is incompatible with resource conservation area designation in the critical area which permits one house per twenty acres.
Thank you, sir.
I remember when this guy spoke, he had owned this house, I think, this property for a long time and wanted to like allow his kids to build on it. So I agree with Chris that we should let him build the house for his family.
I would also like to say that this house does have no direct road frontage as the parcels go. They would have to get some kind of right-of-way through the neighbor's property. The property that fronts the road is a protected property through Baltimore County, so we couldn't allow road frontage through that.
Are there other individual properties in this critical area?
Sorry, could you rephrase that?
Is that the only inhabited parcel in this area?
Right next door is inhabited. So they could go through and put one house if they wanted to.
Right, so, I mean, are we, if are we providing justification for other people to upzone from RC twenty if we grant this individual? Upzoning to RC five, it should at least be RC six in a critical area.
So what did they compromise?
I think we did note that there's no other RC five in this immediate area.
Well, north of it, there's some up there. But I mean, you know, it depends on how one defines immediate.
So he wants to build two houses on it. It's just shy, from what I recollect, it's just shy of ten acres.
So RC five would allow him to build two houses. Well, assuming, right, assuming he met the dotted I's and crossed T's with the environmental people. But at least theoretically, he could build two houses on it.
And he needs to access, road access.
And provided he got road access, that's right.
Okay, we have a motion and we had a second?
Yes, we did.
Are we ready for a roll call? Mr., go ahead.
What is the motion?
The motion is to grant the petitioner his request to upzone his own personal property for building his family a couple of houses. To, the request is to grant RC five.
Chris?
Yes.
How long has he owned the property?
I don't have it in front of me. Whoever's driving the video, can you get over to Estat?
I can get that.
Yeah.
I remember he said it's been in his home for, in his family's hands for, you know, quite a few decades up there.
That's what I remember, too.
Right, he said he inherited it.
There's no address, so I'm not sure how to look that up on Estat.
Yeah.
Nope, not there.
Nothing.
Yeah, so his family probably owned it before Estat existed, huh?
This actually shows it a little bit more than ten acres, so he's got his ten acres.
Okay. Somewhere I saw nine point something.
On that one, the.
Yeah, nine point.
Log, nine point nine seven.
Go down a little bit. I just thought it might have a deed reference. I could tell you when it was from.
I think the passing down or inheriting it is an important thing to note. You know, he didn't just buy this piece of land last week.
Yeah, so we can't stop him from expanding his family to build for his family. Okay.
All right, are we ready for a roll call or no?
Let's go.
Okay. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Of course.
Mr. Heinel? Was that an of course, or was that just somebody else?
It looks like Mr. Heinel is gone.
Is, he's gone again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, next on to seven dash zero one six, Ms. Brophy.
Thank you, sorry, I was unmeeting myself. So this petitioner has owned basically over thirty acres of property. And he currently operates his family business, Miller Refrigeration on site. So if you look at the facility to the right of the yellow outline, that's Miller's Refrigeration. They've been in the Dundalk area for over twenty years. He basically wants to expand his warehouse on the site of the original nine point one seven acres he's requested. He's actually going to amend down to two point five six acres closest to the railroad track because there's wetlands on the site. And there's already trains running along the railroad track daily. He did send an updated map to you, Joe. He told me, I'm not sure if you got it.
Yes, I sent it out.
I do apologize, he sent it late.
Jen, I emailed it to you, so.
So if you scroll to the next page, Jen. So that, so basically Miller's Refrigeration is that piece to the right that you guys saw. There's wetlands kind of in the middle. And then over to the left is the railroad track. And then that piece in the middle is actually only in the RC two. So they no longer want to change the other piece that's RC fifty. So they're just requesting for two point five six acres in the RC two to go ahead and go to MLIM to allow them to expand their current business. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from RC two to MLIM on the amended two point five six acres.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board?
Just a clarification. So this actually isn't in Dundalk. This is in Chesapeake Park, which is adjacent to Rosedale. Very, very limited access back in this community. The community is opposed to this. And that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, as I understand it, it's next to a railroad track and it's like under six ninety-five. I mean, this is not like prime area, so.
Yeah. Did they say specifically why they were opposed, Chris?
That's my question.
The residential community and the trucks have to get in and out. There's no way for the trucks to get in and out. And over the years, this particular company has just been creeping, creeping, creeping more and more and more.
Yep. How do the trucks get out now, Chris?
They've got to go, you have to zoom out. They've got to come through. Actually, they got to come through the residential neighborhood and then across Chesapeake Avenue because that's the only street that has a bridge over the railroad tracks out to Pulaski Highway. It's one way in, one way out, that's it.
So what's going to change by adding this?
There is, you know, I had eight letters in opposition from neighbors, direct neighbors. There were three people that spoke against this at the meeting. They're very concerned about the increased truck traffic since there is only one bridge in and out of this area. So if something happens, then they're stuck.
Yep.
But the business is already operating there, right? So they're just worried about additional trucks is what it is, right?
Correct. It's, they said, you know, they're already getting a lot of larger trucks coming in and out of here. And if they build a warehouse, they're just going to get more coming in and out.
And I just can't help but think, you know, if some person jumps off a bridge, should everybody jump off the bridge just because the I, MLIM exists next door? That, that it's not transitional zoning to RC two. It's industrial zoning next to an RC two and more importantly, next to RC fifty and a navigable waterway.
No, they're going towards.
DR five five.
Train tracks, though. They're going towards.
There's train tracks all over the country. I mean, train tracks, who cares? They go through parks. It doesn't
No, no, I understand.
Industrial in a park.
I understand, Kathy, what you're saying. Trust me, I get it. But what I'm saying is, but it's an existing business that's been serving the community and wants to expand and do well. So if we say no, don't expand, then they move out and go somewhere else. Would we rather keep a profitable well, successful business in the area or say like, no, you can't expand. That's it for you?
What's the nature of the business right now?
It's a refrigeration. They service and.
Yeah, plumbing. They have plumbing, Miller Refrigeration, they're pretty big in this area.
Right, yeah, we don't want them to move out.
How much property do they, what does their property encompass?
They own like over thirty-some acres.
And they're asking to rezone?
Two point five six now. I mean, originally they were asking for like nine, but there's a bunch of wetlands and things like that. And I was like, you're never, it doesn't make sense. So that's why they they only asked for the two and a half and some.
So.
Two point five six.
Okay, so you have that information and we don't? Two point five six?
No, Jen just put it up there, Mr. Array. Yeah, right there.
Can we? To the railroad tracks, it'll be. You know, my concern and I understand, I see the lots right adjacent to it. They've been there, somebody said, for twenty, thirty years. You can force them to move so that they can grow their business, which is what most business people generally try to do at some point. Or you can have them move and now you'll have an empty manufacturing plant, which would have to be refitted where somebody would have to try to buy all the land and get it rezoned to do something else. And I mean, I always think of, you know, Solo Cup in Owings Mills. The neighbors didn't want it until we got twenty restaurants there and a Wegmans. And now you don't hear anybody complain. And you see what's been built at the end of the subway, at Metro in Owings Mills, and everybody lives there and everybody's there. You can't always stop a business from, you know, from trying to grow. And I don't think, you know, they're not asking for the whole nine acres. They're asking for something that is going to be seventy thousand square feet if you're talking about two acres or something for the warehouse. They need parking and other stuff for it. And I understand it goes through neighborhoods. I'm not advocating yet for it. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote. But I do have concerns when we try to cut off industrial growth, you know. Again, you know, we all, many of us visited Trade Point and we saw a crappy Bethlehem Steel. And I sure like driving people in there now to show it's there. And that's what's in this area. That's where they are. And I just don't think you can always say, because the houses that are there have been there for seventy-five years, you know, that you can't try to expand your business properly. Mr. Harvard, do you know, are they a good business? I mean, nice, do they, you know, try to take care and be involved in the community or not?
I don't live in that area. I have no idea.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were there, too.
I will say that this also is LDA, so they do have an imperious surface limit they're going to have to meet on the overall site.
It's not this particular deal I'm talking about. I'm just looking at what the county needs to have some industrial and commercial growth.
I'm sorry, can we see the proposed revised? Again, I believe I thought I saw a proposed building on, was it the next slide?
It's the first page, Jen.
Yeah, so that's the proposed warehouse, okay. I was just concerned that that the new zoning would be right on the backyards of all those people that live on that street and affect them. And I was wondering if we couldn't provide a buffer, but I see they need that.
That building is a hundred, is a hundred eighty-seven. If you round it to two hundred times fifty, you got a ten thousand square foot building. That's not huge at that point.
Yeah, I have no problems with the building. I just have problems with the truck traffic behind all those houses.
Well, the, there's, the existing building is right in front of those houses as well. I agree with you, Mark. I mean, me personally, I would never want to live in a community if this happens to me. But unfortunately, it looks like the houses with the existing building have kind of already gone through this process. So it just seems like this is what the community is. And since we, you know, can't move the hurdle or create any other space, this is going to be what continues to happen throughout Baltimore County. You're just going to keep framing heavy stuff behind people's houses. It's unfortunate.
No, I want to approve this. I'm for this. I'm just a little concerned that all that, you know, those people that live in those houses are now going to have truck traffic behind them.
No, I agree, but I'm saying it's already, it's already been that way.
Right.
But you're not going to have that much more in a ten thousand-foot building, Mark. I mean, you can't store that much in ten thousand feet.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
I'm not saying there's not going to be some trucks. I agree.
Yeah.
But if there was a two hundred thousand square foot building and you're going to have, you know, another fifty dump trucks driving through, I understand. But these are closed panel trucks that, whatever they operate in their business. And I just think it's not a huge thing in these people. You know, I just don't believe that it's necessarily going to affect the value. I don't know. Mr. Halepka, you're good with the Google Earth. Any buffers, any fences along the back of, I don't see the street. I don't see the street.
Right now, they back up to a forested area. And what I can't understand is how they will get from their current facility to the warehouse.
It's it's the drive right behind those houses.
There is nothing right behind those houses right now.
Well, there will be.
Right.
Yeah.
But between the two facilities, they still had to come out to the main road or whatever that main road is because that
Yeah, if you, if you go, I've not driven It is a very, you know, a very isolated little community. These are small roads. I don't know, fifteen, maybe twenty foot. I this is not, I mean, it's a weird location for this, this um facility. I I suspect everything sort of ran fathered in.
Yeah, that's true. But at the same time, going back to what I would say. Um, this business is uh, they may come up with other options either to move, to leave. And then we lose, we have open space and which is not
Maybe they maybe they can get a waiver to go over the wetlands and get that drive away.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they are going to work through those two, you know, things, you know, themselves and working with the community also, hopefully. So can we then approve this and put a condition? So Emily, how can you raise your motion?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm willing to amend my motion to say that um, you know, we make a motion to grant the petitioner's request to change the zoning from RC two to MLIM on the amended two point five six acres as drawn there. Um, with the recommendation that to the council that they obviously work with the residents in the surrounding area to come up with a covenant for any appropriate buffers as necessary.
May I ask a question of the board generally? So I know that we're down into really nitty gritty, looking at every parcel in the county. But as a land use strategy, is this appropriate? And I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying, sir, if you're trying to look holistically at how we built out as a county, how we use the land that we have available for redevelopment or development. Is this a good strategy for this property at this location, at this part of the county? And again, I'm not giving a value on it. Staff has already made statements. It's just we are forced into the CZMP process of looking at these parcels as if they're going to drive um, greater investment or greater utilization. Um, we've come to a place where we are compelled to do it this way, but um, if if you just took this holistically and zoomed out to thirty thousand square feet, is this what you would think is the right use for this property? And and sorry, got a little too philosophical there, but I'm just kidding. That's where we're often
I think that I think that's a great point to think about what else, what other uses the land could be used for. But I mean, just kind of being in this area, I I don't really see any other use for this. Like, I don't see it being residential because it's landlocked and you already have an existing manufacturing facility back there. I don't think anyone's going to build the the way houses cost right now. I don't think anyone would want to pay, you know, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars to live right there, right? And then to what Howard was saying before, like, if if this company really feels like they need this space and they can't expand and they move, I don't know, to Carroll County, then you lose that, you lose that source of jobs for for a lot of local plumbers and the contract workers that might utilize that facility um, to go to work each day. And it doesn't, to me, just looking at it from a high level, I don't see what changes it really makes to this community beyond like, which is a big deal. You know, those roads are crumbling probably already. So you're adding more dump trucks to it. Um, but I don't know.
Dump trucks, I use that and I was wrong. They're
Okay, well, you're right. They're not. They're vans. They're vans, actually, because they're plumbers. It is
He's not dumb.
Yeah, it's
You are looking at at now, now I've heard a suggestion that we can ignore the wetlands. Um, I've heard that we are willing to ignore the Chesapeake Bay critical area. There is, by all scientific evidence of high likelihood that there's going to be a rise in seawater levels, including this area next to, and I'm sorry, I'm ashamed, I don't know the name of that creek. And we're willing to compromise this RC lot to accommodate a warehouse. I'm just a little confused about what our priorities are.
Yeah, Kathy, that's the upper reaches of Back River.
Okay, thank you. Do you expect it to rise with the seawater levels?
Not in my lifetime.
Hmm.
I it's it's very close to the Back River um sewage treatment plant. And I don't think they, you know, I don't think they're a major concern yet. It's it's pretty far up, though.
Up the bay.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I I got cut off. I don't know where I had made a second. Where are we at on that?
Well, if if are we ready to go to a vote, folks?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Um, what, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
Emily, do you want to repeat the motion?
Oh, I I you don't have to. No, I'm opposed.
Okay.
Does anybody else need the motion repeated? Okay, not hearing any. Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Pirlo.
Um, no.
Ms. Penaro.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
I've got seven to six motion passes. Next, seven dash zero one seven, Mr. Pirlo.
So this is a or unit apartment building. Been used many years for that um, nonconforming. Um, has been licensed by the county in the past as rental units. Um, the la- the landlord, the owner only is leased to sixty to an older people, one including his mother. I said he takes care of his mother. Zoning Office recently rescinded his licenses for these units. Unless he's able to get um, the BLCCC. Um, the Community Association President, Ms. Bittenger, um, did testify, I believe, in support of giving him this BLZ CCC. And the planning department did not agree with that. Um, you know, I just have a problem sometimes when we don't um, provide what's needed to bring things into conformity with what's been used for many, many years and been done for many, many years. Um, I would make a motion that for seven dash zero one seven, that the petitioner's requested zoning of BLCCC be approved.
I would second that, and we've done that for a number of other places to get people in compliance.
Okay, we have a a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
So why, why was the license pulled before?
What happened? Hear that, Mr. Array?
What happened before?
They had um, sorry. It was, it was improved. It was a nonconforming use. Um, had been licensed and then the zoning office recently rescinded the rental license because it was a nonconforming apartments, forcing the owners to request the zoning relief to comply. And I don't like to see people lose the value of their property, whatever they used it for. Um, because of a change in the enforcement of the zoning at that point.
Okay, any other discussion?
Oh, sorry. Were they granted like an exception before Howard and then they took the exception away?
Yeah, that's the way I was explained to me.
Okay.
It's like the ones we had in District One. I think we had one in District Two also.
Yes, we did. Yep.
Same situation.
So.
Are we ready?
But he knows now that he must do everything to comply, right?
He he can't comply because of the zoning. So it's not, not, he didn't comply. He can't comply.
And the staff is recommending BL.
Okay, are we ready to take a roll call?
No, no, Madam Chair, I I want to know why BLCCC. Can you re-explain why you want that?
So that his so that his use of the building as four apartments is proper. And comes within the zoning laws.
Mr. Array, part of this is that those property owners who have not been in compliance, we we frankly, as a a staff, go back and forth on, do we basically say, well, they've been out of compliance, let them come into compliance uh, through a zoning change. This is a very small property on Eastern Boulevard. Um, but we've tried to be consistent in not supporting these. It, the fact that they've been functioning as an an apartment building when it wasn't zoned for that um, always causes some heartburn. But um, we understand the request and, you know, you know, we're not going to fall in our story on this one.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a roll call?
Real quick, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, there were a couple code complaints on this property, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because they're all compliant.
Okay. All right, Mr. Array.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
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 So are you saying yes?
Yes.
Right, Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Penaro?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Next, on to issue seven dash zero two. And that's by Mr. Hafer and Mr. Halipka. Mr. Halipka, you want to go first?
Zero two zero? You say zero?
Seven zero zero two zero, yes.
Which is one we should all remember quite
Yes. A whole page of manure.
Quite.
Yes.
This is the Fort Howard property that, as we know, the community came out very vehemently against. Um, I'm not sure what can or or will happen with the property. Uh, my recommendation, I would make a motion to continue to leave it as DR uh, one. Um, the developers will have to work with the community and the councilmen to see if there's a, you know, they can figure out something to work. But given all the opposition and everything, I don't see any reason to change this.
Second. Okay, we have a a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Guys, this is, when I had asked earlier about what was uh, happening with the state law, um, this property fits that change in the state law. So um, Steve, I can kind of articulate it, but I'm sure you know it much better than I do. But um, they're, they're going to have the right um to put, I believe, um, whatever zoning they want on there or or higher density. It doesn't matter, schools, water or anything, so.
For what reason, Todd?
It it's a, it's a zoning law that was changed by the state of Maryland that uh, basically took county zoning away from us. So Steve, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to wing it, Steve. Can you?
I can wing it if you, if Steve doesn't want to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so basically, the governor put in a very large three uh, bill package of affordable housing for the state. Um, knowing that the state of Maryland has a shortage of a hundred or two hundred thousand housing units. Um, and basically, the bottom line is, the state can supersede county zoning laws and rezone something to provide the density to build affordable housing. That's the simplest way to describe the bill. I heard the governor, I was there that day. He testified for almost two hours. Um, he does really believe in it. Um, me personally, I pushed the governor as he was running for office very strongly that this is something that's always been important to me, um, in the business I am, affordable housing in this state. And even more so for my county that I've lived in for seventy years. Um, that we provide affordable housing. Um, you've all heard me talk about it before. I do not represent the Himmelrich Associates people. I don't know them well. I happen to have met them a couple of times, but I don't I have no problem talking about it. But I would tell you, it's got to be twenty years that nothing has happened here on this hospital site. I have done the title four or five times for various other people that had it under contract and have never been able to get the community to agree on anything. So I don't know that it will ever happen. I don't know who the councilman is, who the county executive is, or who it will be that will ever get them to agree that this should be redeveloped to some kind of housing um, based on proper densities, proper environmental and other things. And if it's going to take the state to over overlap our zoning to get it done, rather than see it sit there for another twenty years, um, when it could be a wonderful senior kind of project and or assisted living kind of facility that it was for the, for the veterans for many years. I got to tell you, I'm really in favor of it, and I hate to see it continue to be at DR one. Um, you know, that the density is not enough. We need the housing to be built. Um, you know, it takes a long time to get this affordable stuff built with community development administration money. And to keep putting it off and putting it off.
So Howard, with a ninety-nine year lease from the VA and nobody owning their land underneath their house, and how was, how is that ever going to work? That's an, that's a question we've been asking Himmel, Himmelrich for years that nobody has a, has a good answer to. That's part of the reason for a lot of the opposition is that all the promises are being made and there's some very core questions to which there are no answers right there, right now.
Howard Brown, Howard Brown has a ninety-nine year lease on the um, metro center at Owings Mills where the subway ends. When the ninety-nine year lease is, either he renegotiates it or he loses the property ninety-nine years from now. It won't be my problem, but I think that ninety-nine years is a long way away.
Yeah, I do, I do want to mention one thing. Um, you know, Baltimore County publicly committed an executive order two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two to, and I quote, foster equitable outcomes for all individuals, populations and communities, particularly those that have been traditionally underserved. Now, from my perspective, given the overwhelming opposition to the proposed change by what everyone agrees is a long underserved community that has traditionally suffered the impacts of economic inequality, we cannot make a change. This clearly, the community opposition was loud and clear, and I just don't see how we can be consistent with what's in the executive order two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two and, and override the will, the will of the community at this point.
Well.
And most, most ground leases usually have something in it that you can redeem it and buy the ground rent if you want to.
Guys, the only reason, I didn't mean that, the only reason I bring this up is that we're going to spend a lot of time and yell about this. We have now been trumped by the state that we have no control over this.
Before you anymore, be careful you don't talk over each other, and we're getting to a point where we're doing that a little bit, so.
If I did that, I apologize, but I, I, I bring it up that, the reason I brought it up to start with, I don't, I think the county said three point five, three point five isn't going to do it because the buildings, to put more than one unit in a building, you have to have five point five. So, but again, I think we're beating up an issue that we no longer have control over.
If it's moved, I, I still say, let's just keep it at D R one, and the state can override the decisions and move forward.
And I agree with that.
Planning staff. I have a question. Is it true that this was original, this was downzoned two cycles, C Z M P cycles ago from D R five point five? And if that is in fact true, who?
It was, it was downzoned, yes. I don't remember from what to what, but I know it was downzoned.
Okay, and who proposed that and why? I'm just curious.
That was in twenty sixteen. Give me one second, I can pull that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's valuable information.
May have been the councilman who downs it. Well, the councilman downzoned it, but whether he proposed the downzoning.
Right.
I believe that's right, Steve. I believe the councilman downzoned it. I proposed the issue.
He did or did not? I, I don't know who proposed it. I know that he downs it.
Yeah.
Chris.
Yeah.
Just for conversational sake, while they're looking up that, that information. When we were at the meeting, it was kind of hard to understand what the community actually wanted, because it was just kind of a WrestleMania match there. What, what, what is it that you think they want?
Um, that's, it's a really great point and an insightful question. I was thinking about that earlier today. I, I think it would depend on who you ask, right? Some people in the community, and I live a half a mile from the property, so I, I'm very in tune with what's going on down here. Some people don't want it, want anything. They want a park, and they will, they will fall on their sword for a park, right? And then there's another sub, subgroup of people who want smart development with the supporting infrastructure to support whatever's able to go in there. And then, you know, there, it's, it's kind of like, it's all over the place. But what, what everybody seems to be united on is what's being proposed now. You know, some people want it to be all veterans, and they don't understand that it can't be all veterans. But what everybody seems to be united on is that what's being proposed now is that, that they're not supporting.
The other aspect is that there are several historic buildings on site that I, I think you have to retrofit, including the old hospital and some of the old buildings, old officers' quarters.
It's required as part of, it's required as part of the.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a, it'll be a challenging site to, to do anything, but I, I understand your question. Because I've never quite understood, I mean, I think Chris is right, that there are a lot of people who just, there's currently a state park and a county park right nearby. And I'm sure there are a bunch of people who would just love it turned into a park, that we'd still have to figure out what to do with all the buildings.
That, it, it was just interesting, because even listening to some of the concerns, how they said, you know, you want more police, more firefighting, more public safety down there, more economic opportunity, and it's like, well, you don't really get that from a park.
Yeah, and they didn't, and they didn't want traffic either.
Who's going to buy the land?
Exactly.
I heard a lot of comments about serving, continuing to serve veterans. And whether it was in the former way that the services were provided through the medical care, the hospital, or residential. I, I continually heard people echoing the need to serve the veterans of the community. And what unfortunately, a lot of folks didn't, I think, totally appreciate is that the federal government gave up on that. And so it's a question of how do this, how do you resurrect as a service provider or service location, when it is pretty, pretty remote from.
Yeah, that's right. You know, I think that banner of serve veterans is like motherhood and apple pie. And I get, I can guarantee you something, that if you said, okay, we're going to provide transitional housing for veterans who are homeless and those who have substance abuse issues.
I mean, he's going nuts.
A whole other thing going on.
Yeah, well, right.
Um, I did pull up the information real quick, Steve. It was put in by the county council. It was D R five five at the time, downzoned to D R one.
Thank you.
Twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Steve, may I ask, I see that the planning board, so it's been, it's currently D R one. It was D R five five, and now the planning board recommends, excuse me, the planning department's recommendation is D R three five. So clearly, the planning board sees the need for redevelopment and residential here. Can you go into any details, wiping to three point, the conclusion of D R three five?
Frankly, Katie, it was like, how do we walk the line between supporting redevelopment, provide housing? Because we are, as an administration, totally committed to providing more housing opportunities and recognizing that because of the community concerns, a lot of it because of services, traffic, schools, five point five may be a little more intense. But I, I totally understand what not only the Himmelrich people said, but what Todd have said and others, that if you don't have greater density, you can't take advantage of existing buildings. But we really want to sort of keep the issue of housing redevelopment alive and putting out the three point five as a sort of a middle ground.
Okay, thank you.
I think we definitely have to keep the idea of housing alive, but I think sometimes people get a little frustrated, especially, you know, down in some of these underserved communities, when you use the phrase affordable housing, you know. It's become so cliche, and the reality is, whatever is built down there, it's not going to be affordable housing. You know, I'm building a house right now in Middle River, and it's not affordable for, for, for most people.
Not affordable to you, you're building.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just being, I, I mean, you know, I can afford it, but in, in general, most people cannot afford that home. And it's going to be the same thing as Sparrow's point, but the reality is, if you're building a million dollar home, I mean, if they build townhouses down there, they're going to be like seven hundred thousand dollars, right? A, a single family is going to be a million or more, so you are going to get some infrastructure improvements, I would imagine, because no one's going to buy a million dollar house on the water with poor infrastructure surrounding it. So I do think, we do have to keep the issue of housing alive, but we got to stop trying to pull the blinds over people and saying that this is some, some act of affordable housing. In general, yes, more housing available means, you know, supply and demand. So in general, the sup, the price may go down a little bit, but this is not an affordable project. And I think people get frustrated sometimes when they hear that, at least I do.
The, the county has presented, our, our recommendation of three point five wasn't about affordability as much of attainability, because we know that there are a number of people in the middle income levels that need to have housing. And the more housing you build, potential, I mean, market, you know, market drives. That, you know. Equal liberalize.
Yeah.
But, you know, we didn't make the recommendation within price points in mind as much as the potential for an opport, the potential opportunity for creating more housing opportunities.
But affordable or workforce housing isn't always to own. In today's world, it's rentals as well. It's taking the older buildings down there and renovating them hopefully, possibly into some kind of, you know, senior housing at that point where they can afford it. Where state money and federal money comes in to, to try to do that. So it's not always to buy. I know we all would like to own a home. It's the American dream for all of us. But there are times that you have to provide rentals for people that can't afford to buy, don't have the down payment and the settlement cost.
I, I totally agree with you. I, I, I'm just, my only argument is, it should be presented the way that you presented it. Right? That, also, because even if it is rental, I mean, you're not built, you're, you're going to build luxury apartments, right?
I don't disagree, I disagree with you a little bit, you know, Mr. Hinton, because I see the projects that are being built in Prince George's and all. We do a lot of this affordable housing. I just saw C D A, you know, renovate six hundred units, I think, in Prince George's, where they put up a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to redo, you know, fifty-year-old buildings. So the money can be there from, from government if you want. You know, and I think that that's what our county is going to need over the next twenty-five or fifty years.
They also talked about, but they also talked about additional housing. Oh, sorry. They also talked about with additional housing and more people. They also complained that the roads were not accommodating, the schools were not accommodating for the students, because they're in trailers now. So they were, it's a whole lot of other issues they were talking about, because they were actually saying, more people comes more traffic, more, more, more need for schools. So that was one of the biggest concerns as well.
And when people hear affordable housing, they think of crime.
Okay, so I want to make a point on this, Madam Chair. We've heard everybody voice their opinion, which is appreciated, but I don't think we're going to be able to resolve these issues here. I think.
I was just going to say, I think we've discussed this a lot. If anyone has any questions, but if, if, if there, something hasn't been answered, then say something. But Mr. Perlo, this was your issue. Are you ready to make a motion?
Did Scott make a motion to keep it D R?
My motion is to maintain property at D R one. And if the state overrides, it will so be it.
I think Ms. German, I think Ms. German seconded it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, that was so long ago. I forgot. Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Perlo?
No.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Seven to two, four, seven to six, motion carries. Okay, now on to seven dash zero two one, Mr. Halipka.
So this is a property in Old Dundalk. It's an old distillery that's right in the heart of a residential area. I have had discussions with, as was presented at the C Z M P hearing. Montebello said that they had covenants that they were working on with the community associations. I've spoken with the community associations. They have, you know, they have confirmed that, that they have worked out covenants so that, that it will restrict what can be done on the property. And they're okay with moving ahead with the request for M L, to keep it M L. It had been downzoned several cycles ago to try and give some leverage in case something happened. So this was, this is sort of taking it back to what they had before, or all the issues that we've talked about in terms of accessing capital, getting loans, et cetera.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yeah, I move to accept the petitioner's request for M L.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to know from planning staff, why you do not want to accept the change?
I'm sure we were told, you know, they were working with a, working on the covenant with the community, but when we make our decision, we can't take that into effect. We have to just accept that it's going to go to M L. It could change into any, any M L use. With this being in a residential area, we didn't, you know, we didn't want to see a heavy manufacturing plant coming down here, so.
Yes, so, so it can be approved with a condition?
Scott, would you be able, would you be able to amend your motion to kind of similar to what we've done in the past?
I will amend my motion to accept the petitioner's request for M L with a covenant, assuming that the covenant is agreed to with the surrounding neighborhood associations.
I'll modify my second.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo? Mr. Perlo? Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, lordy, lordy. Seven dash zero two four, Mr. Perlo.
Um, so this is Back River Neck Road. It's an auto repair shop. It was recently bought by a new owner. He would possibly like, since he's an auto repair shop, it's what my family business, as I told you, was. He'd like to be able to possibly sell a few used cars. They would need, you know, various public hearings and all for a special exception at that point. He spoke to the community association president, Mr. McDonough, and received his support as, as to a covenant. He already has the A S, so we don't have to discuss that, but needs the B R instead of B L to allow the accessory sales. On Back River Neck Road, where it was, where it is, did not seem to, you know, be an overuse of the property, you know, along Back River Net to have a few cars out front for sale.
Is that a motion?
I haven't made it yet, but I can. So the motion would be to, twenty-four, would be to accept the requested zoning of B R A S on point nine oh acres on one forty-nine Back River Neck Road with a covenant. That that's what he would be doing.
I will second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah. The staff recommendation is B L A S. So why? Why do the staff think that it should be B R A S instead of B R S?
Well, he's asking for the B R, so he has the ability to sell some used cars there.
B L A S is what's existing. So there just, the planning board just is asking, the planning department is asking to keep it the same.
So I got a email from zoning. I asked a question. They do need the B R, but they still need this special exception once they get the B R. But if they kept the zoning as is, they could still apply for a special hearing for, to sell a small amount of cars, a small amount of used cars as accessory use to the mechanic shop. That's what I was told. So either way, they still have to go to a hearing.
So therefore the motion should be conditioned, Howard?
Well, I said he'd be willing to covenant to the amount of cars that he could sell. Um, you know, but I think the BR makes it, um, an easier process than having to go through, you know, a special exception hearing. And looking at, and if you look up and down the road, there is BR, there's BL, there's BL, there's BR. You know, it's all right there on Back River Net Road.
Working to zoning, even with the BR, they still need this special exception hearing. So either way.
But he believes that he would like to have the BR, so I thought it was reasonable and looking at the maps. But I still think that it's a reasonable request and would make my motion. I didn't hear if there was a second to me or not, but.
I second, I had seconded it.
Okay, Howard provided, he knows that he he has to go through this special exception, you know, approval.
Yes. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Then let's move for a vote. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. McGinnis.
All right.
He's in trouble.
All right, uh, no.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion carries. Next on to seven dash zero two eight. Mr. Pirlo, you're up again.
All right, let me find that one. I, I did it. I don't, I, yeah, I guess I did, but. I, um, don't see any comments on it that I was asked, so I'm not sure why I did. So, zero two eight.
Was this the one that, um, we just received document, uh, a letter on today?
Yes.
Okay.
That's from Adam Baker.
Um, who was that Katie or was that, uh, Ms. Brophy?
That was me, Katie. And then, and then Mr. Lafferty, I have a deep voice. I'm thinking of that. It's getting like, it's almost nine.
So I would make a motion that the requested zoning by the petitioner of MH be approved.
I don't think I got a chance to see the additional information, but it only came in today, Howard. Can you give a little background on this one?
I'm, I'm looking for it myself. I don't seem to have it here in my notes, but that's what was.
Madam Chair, if I may throw myself into this, which I will acknowledge frustrates me to no end. Because we get a letter dated April seventeenth from the attorney saying, oh, by the way, back in twenty twenty-three, the ALJ approved by special hearing, the use of the property as being requested. Uh, but they never submitted any of that information prior to, uh, yesterday. Uh, they didn't put it as part of their justification to the county. They didn't submit any of this prior to the planning board's public hearings, uh, but it does appear that this has been approved through the ALJ. And so my question to the, the planning board members is, since the ALJ has already approved the use, does that justify?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Steve. I agree with you, Steve, that I, I didn't even read that because I had enough things going on, but I go back to being consistent, and if we didn't approve it and they go to get a loan, it's, it's not going to be conforming. So it's, if the ALJ has approved this, then I would, I would move that we support, you know, their decision and.
Well, do we know the ALJ approved this, or were we just told in a letter from an attorney that the ALJ approved it? Because I haven't heard from the community association, and I know who the, the president is, and he had been on the phone. So I wonder if they.
Well, it's been operating for fifty-some years, um, as a trucking facility. Well, but that's why they went to the ALJ, I think, to try to get the zoning in conformity.
Well, is it just planning staff and, and Mr. Lafferty, is it, is it true? I mean, I, I really don't ever question an attorney's, uh, honesty. But I will ask to, is it approved in twenty, uh, two thousand eight? Um, that it was rezoned by the council to suppress the community because they were pushing to redevelop, and it never happened, and that's why it went to DR?
I did not have a chance to look at the, uh, the ALJ's opinion. I get this email late this afternoon. Uh, I have not looked at the order and opinion from the ALJ. Um, and maybe, I don't know if Joe can weigh in on the, the history, the zoning history of this site or not.
So yes, this was downzoned in two thousand eight. It's part of the Wells McComas Plan. Um, the idea was for redevelopment of the property of the area, but, you know, they have the houses all along the water, just to the east there. That was kind of the idea, but obviously, multiple years later, near Miss Twenty, it's, uh, has not happened yet, so.
So they just want to return to the zoning that was in existence for years, for decades. Um, prior to that two thousand. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's been changed for decades also, so.
But Wells, Wells McComas is supposedly trying to negotiate a covenant, isn't that correct?
Uh, we wouldn't know that.
This was prime land for building. Why doesn't Baltimore County invest in that multi-billion dollar a year budget and doing some, uh, house building back here? Community would love that.
A little close to the water.
All right, uh, Mr. Pirlo, any other questions? If not, Mr. Pirlo, you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that on seven zero two eight, that the petitioner's requested zoning of MH be approved in the amount of eleven point nine one acres.
I second that.
Any questions or comments before we go to a vote?
Yeah, so Howard, I would like to know, what would MH allow them to do? That they end up doing now?
It would bring them, I believe, into conformity for using it as a trucking facility.
And the staff recommendation is to keep the zoning the same.
Correct. Why? They would like to be in conformity based on the ALJ hearing officer and not have to deal with issues going forward in the future. They've been there for fifty-three years, about fifty-two years, but, uh.
So, so does that mean that the ALJ decision was, you know, came after the recommendation by the staff?
No.
No, it came before.
ALJ decision was made in twenty twenty-three, but the staff was not made aware of that fact. And because it's the petitioner's responsibility to make the case, we don't go back and look at ALJ or Board of Appeals decisions.
Okay.
And since they did not present that to us, we did not know that in fact the ALJ had already approved the use.
Okay.
So we didn't have, have that as a basis for our decision.
Okay, thank you.
Now, and we've talked many times about the ability, this, you know, this is a major facility, but borrowing money, Todd's the, the banker, but it's very hard when you're not in conformity. When I do title work, I have to check the zoning and certify that there are no violations of it at that point, and that's what they're trying to do here, is know that they will not have a problem if they ever go forward. They've been here a long time. They don't expect to leave, but I think they want to know that they have the, the zoning in compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there, if there's no more discussion, let's, are we ready to go for a vote? Um, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heine, Heine, oh, he's not here. Mr. Hinton.
No.
Mr. Halipka. Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion carries. Now on to the last item for this evening. Seven dash zero three two, Mr. Warren, this is yours.
Thanks, guys. This is a, a, a marina owner. This is a property adjacent to his existing marina on a, on a peninsula. Um, went and seen the site, um, uh, he's been parking boats on that site. Um, because he needed additional space. Um, that's not legal. So he needs to get in compliance, uh, and parking, you know, to park and, and work on that site. The expansion is existing marina. Um, I've spoken on this a number of times. I'm pretty much in support of trying to, you know, if we're going to have beautiful scenic areas, let's enjoy them, and the way to enjoy them is through a marina. Um, and with that, I, I, you know, I put the issue in, um, or the, you know, for the individual, but he missed the timing on it, so, uh, I'm in support of, of, you know, this issue.
Yeah, one of the issues that I noted, my note didn't, they hear what, traffic. That there was, uh, a concern about traffic, uh, in that area. In and out of traffic, so does that mean that we are going to condition this as well?
Um, I, do you have an idea how to condition it? I mean, I, I don't, it's an existing marina now, so.
Todd, can I, like, why, why is, I know who, I know who Boatyard, why do they need BM? What's wrong with the BMB? If they're parking boats, BMB should be sufficient.
Uh, I, I am not knowledgeable enough to know what the difference between BM and BMB is, but.
The scuttlebutt is that he wants to open a restaurant, and there's no parking down there, so people are going to be parked in front of other people's houses and just call it. It's a very tiny street. It's going to cause inordinate problems, and every time he's asked what he wants to do, he comes up with something else. And it's, everything he comes up with, it's like BMB takes care of that. So it's, it's very unclear what is that exactly going on down here.
Well, i- if, if BMB will give them the additional storage and make them compliant, which I don't know that that does or doesn't, I would ask planning.
Boatyard is a, a use by right in a BMB zone.
Okay, well then, then is, then I would recommend that.
But he already has that.
Well, then let's make the motion to, I'm just telling you what I was told by the, the guy that wanted to do it. I don't know. He's saying that I can't park my boats. I'm getting fined because I'm parking my boats on the property. Um, so I was like, okay, well, you know, let's expand, you know, you own the property. Let's expand the, the BM zoning. If BM, if BMB is gonna, is he, Steve, is he getting fined or?
Yes, he's in violation right now.
Well, if you, if, if you're in violation with BMB, then BMB doesn't work, right?
Do we have any detail of those violations at all, Steve? Like, is it for too many? I mean, I, I, what is the violations? Because I am reading BMB and I'm, I'm with Chris on this one. I mean, it says.
I think they were parking boats in the buffer area.
Oh, got it.
So we should, uh, vote to accept staff recommendation?
Who owns the marina to the north?
He does.
Okay, I'm just trying to, doesn't say through that, so I just wanted.
Yeah.
Okay, so his violations are not because he's parking too many. It's he's in the buffer area. Is that what it was, Joe?
I believe so, but I don't have confirmation of that.
So, I mean, he's in violation. I mean, the, the, the rules are made for a reason, and we're trying to accommodate him breaking the rules by changing the zoning. Am I getting that straight?
Well, that is why I'm saying that we should accept staff recommendation as it is.
Well, I, 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 I don't totally agree with that concept that i- if there's a marina there and we can help this business guy get a bigger marina to enjoy the Chesapeake, I'm in support of that. So that's why I did what I did. If you guys are telling me that they don't need BM, that B, that BMB or whatever it is works, I can support that. I just, I put it in based on the information I had and that he could not do what he was doing, and he was getting fines and stuff like that for having boats on the property. That's what I've been told.
So i- is the issue, the buffer zone, like the size of the lot is more, is that more the issue here for him?
A question to the planning department.
We don't know.
He has BM, BM, he would not be in violation for storage?
I don't know. I meant, we're not sure what the violations are, so I'm trying to look them up real quick to see if I could find out, but.
Let's, let's not lose sight of the fact that the petitioner is the one that has to make the case.
I understand, but I.
The, the department's not in a position of having to run down all the violations and all the issues. If the petitioner has not made the case why they should have this new zoning, um, we take the position that it's not warranted. Um, and I don't think the petitioner here, you know, in respect to our good friend, Mr. Warren, has made the case that something i- if changed, if the zoning is changed, is going to support what they're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, a- again, I'm not, I tend to be pro-business. I think everyone knows that. But when I met with the guy, he said he can't, shocking, I know. Uh, he, he can't, he can't, you know, it affects his, uh, uh, ability to, um, re- repair boats, um, parking, I'm like reading some notes I wrote down, so. So, you know, that's the.
Okay. So are we looking up his, his violations or we want to vote on this? It's not.
Yeah.
Mr. Warren, you brought this up. Are you ready to?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I, because I don't know, and I'm going to go with, I'm going to believe the client, the person's not a liar, so I'm going to do, I'm going to move for, uh, for, I believe it's trying to. I wrote this stupid thing, I don't remember what I split, hold on, hold on, hold on.
We have to go to seven west.
I understand. I just want to make sure I do this right, so I don't screw it up.
We are going to seven west after this tonight.
Yeah.
Mr. Array?
They're going to be closed.
I, I only see access to code search, uh, code complaints, I believe this was an environmental complaint. I don't have access to those, so.
I'm going to make a motion to BM zoning.
BM?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Um.
I'll second it.
All right, any other questions or comments, or we'll go take a vote? Mr. Array?
Is that a?
Do you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, I think, y- y- you know, Todd, already this BM, BMB, DR five five. So why not keep that? What impact would that have on this guy?
Peter, in all due respect, vote up or down, please.
Yeah, yeah, Peter, we already have a motion and a second, so if.
Okay. No.
Good. Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
A motion does not carry, can I have another motion?
I move to accept, um, staff recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes, and I'd also like to thank the planning staff for all their hard work on this as we wind down.
Mr. Heck, uh, Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes, and after this, I'm going to go outside in the dark and hug a tree.
I'm going to hug a bottle of wine.
I want to thank you all for all the hard work. I want to thank the planning staff. I mean, you've done a tremendous job. Uh, you put up with a lot of, up from us, so big congrats to you. So this is finally the conclusion of our agenda for tonight. The board is tentatively scheduled for our final vote on the CZMP twenty twenty-four during our May sixteenth board meeting. Details will be shared with the board and posted on the planning board's, uh, website closer to the meeting time. And please, 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 can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor?
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.